I don't think you're gonna need it, there's nothing on it, it's just a presentation.
I was gonna say.
What?
That's right.
Gender for the first.
Those.
I don't think.
Uh, what?
Save a couple of shekels.
Yeah, yeah.
That was a free one.
I covered it up.
Man, what are you nervous about? What are you just doing?
All right, sorry last.
But. When I'm doing something goofy, just, just, you know, give me a.
So.
You're really saying that?
Yeah. No, no, no. Testing, testing.
Okay, uh, is that, so is that an overpart? Are you getting rid of it?
No, so.
Testing.
That's fine, because I just, for some reason, I didn't have.
Testing.
Gosh, okay, so that's why there's a gas, and I tell us.
Yeah.
So you're gonna end up having an additional part?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, let's keep that. And is there, does that write on that box? Then we had a pop with that card, and I was like, do you want?
Well.
That card. That's fine, just let me know when you want it, and once it's in there, it's like, that's supposed to be.
Yeah, I said.
Interconnected. That's right.
Yeah, it's on, it's on. Yeah, I'll, I'll. Yeah.
Yes, I am.
Well, this is.
I'm, I'm in the house.
Sorry.
What's your hair?
I didn't get a fish.
Oh, you know. I figured it was gonna probably get a little confusing.
Oh, my goodness.
I did look at it.
Where's Sapper?
Right.
He's just saying, he's just saying, he's getting rid of one, and I'll get one, before we got.
No.
Scott.
Okay.
So I'll see if I can.
No. Yes.
Good life.
Yes. Yes. Yeah. So I asked, I asked. Yeah. I asked Matt if it was a, uh, a form or whatever, or, and I just, I'll just leave it as it's always been.
Sometimes you mix it up.
I was debating that. It's going all over, but inside it's not too. Let's make it a little more.
Yeah. Do you, okay, so, yes. How's your pay?
Whatever, because there's, there was one of those people when they were buying a new house, right? I kind of just did it together, right here, question, so. I was pretty sure, so I had my E P A. Hey. It's not us. And they were, uh, catching up.
I said.
I'll just.
Hey.
Set.
I just. Hey.
Well, there were, so it's also to share them with them.
Here, here's the other thing. They're all very. Because it is. Being used as a.
Right. Good one, yeah, it's not big, it's not a day. We all, we know, hope for us.
No, no, no. And he said, yes, Jim.
Well, he, uh, he accepted his condition, uh, law. So he's supposed to go for this forty dollar. And he's supposed to go places. Seen all pillows. Wow. She should, she should start.
Sorry.
Well, would be three dollars to get on the.
Right, right.
They know. The tax of the. I thought of, uh, Brad, and how so. How is? They figure like. Uh, uh. Uh, yeah.
Oh, it's good. All right, so I thought I'd get a real. It's like, okay. Specific spot. Right out here. Blue, I'm only gonna get right out, it's maybe, uh, I mean, super long hair one by. He's watching. Right.
It's, we have four steps.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so like, so, the slow, you know, a lot of times, you have like this little can or something. I don't know. Everybody is. I'm serious. I don't know. All the training truck is coming. Yeah.
I mean it.
Maybe this, this would want to go all the. Who gets the.
I don't know.
Like garage.
Garage.
Another safe line is all the place.
Yeah, it's like.
Really?
I got you.
Got a bunch of.
Just ready. I can only imagine.
I will be up to six hours, and the material looks so. So.
Yes.
Just use my cell. I will have the material.
All right.
I heard that is called.
Yeah.
You wanna give.
Yeah.
We're gonna give that right. I mean, I could roll this right into the. So that I can train.
Do you all have?
Yes, I believe he said.
I live.
Yes, yes.
Sure.
Okay.
Hi, Ken, this is Matt at Village Hall, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Great, we'll be starting shortly.
Okay. Okay, great.
Okay. Look at him. Look at. Stand high, I don't know.
Sure.
I've been looking for this stuff. Uh, I usually. I, I use this. Well, there is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Here's the, check the first one. Yes, yes, yes. Here's, here's.
Not. I know what, I know what.
That was a. That's a. Very. I did, I started like, I'm trying to. Since it's your.
Next.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
What hit the ordinance? Yeah. Okay. So. I guess.
Well. Here. I know.
Right.
Like, I'm.
Yeah.
Sorry, she is. About seeing.
No, I.
I know. I don't know. I watch for the, just the budget.
Yeah.
She's all. All right, sorry.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I can.
Yeah. To allow him to participate with it. It's a business. Yeah. So it's business. Yes.
Close her. All right, okay. Okay, so, that's for public comment?
Yep.
Okay.
And then this is just the.
All right, super. All right, well, uh, welcome, and my apologies for being a few minutes late here, so, we'll go ahead and, um, uh, welcome everybody to the Village Committee, the whole meeting at six oh oh five, and I'll let, uh, our deputy clerk, please take the role call.
All right, trustee Bachner?
Here.
Trustee Gillis?
Here.
Trustee Vasquez?
Here.
Trustee Brennan?
Here.
Trustee Johnson?
Well, can we call him, don't we have to make a motion?
Oh, yeah, oh, cause he's not in yet?
Yeah, let's, let's call everybody who's physically present, and then we'll button that up.
Trustee O'Connell?
Here.
Okay, um, if I can get a motion to allow our trustee Johnson to, uh, participate telephonically?
And the basis for his conflict is business, thank you.
So move.
Second.
All right.
Okay.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
And trustee O'Connell?
He can vote for himself.
He can't vote, but that's okay.
Yeah. That's.
All right, so welcome, Ken.
Thank you.
You've, you've been allowed to be part of this, so.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess we'll open up the public meeting, and then have Sheila talk? Is Sheila? Or should we have Sheila talk before the public hearing? Should we open it up first?
Either way, oh, well, it makes sense, so.
Up first, right. All right, so we'll, um, we'll have public comment, then, I guess, we're opening up the.
Yeah, the public hearing's actually during.
During the.
During the village board meeting? So this is just public comment for the committee, the whole, so.
So she can, Sheila? Um, this is your turn to speak, this is, you're gonna speak on Juneteenth for the budget, or did you wanna speak in just general, or both? But you can do both.
Um, I actually wanna speak about Juneteenth and the budget.
Yeah, sure, okay.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, um, President Aducci? Members of the Board of Trustees? Staff? Esteemed guests here today? I'm here, um, to speak about, oh, and I should say, for those who are not here in person, um, hi. Um, my name is Sheila Radford Hill, I'm, uh, a resident of River Forest, I live at four fourteen Clinton Place, and I'm here to talk a little bit about Juneteenth, and a request for funding for the event. Last year, we held this event for the first time, and it was quite successful. And so we want to reprise it and expand it. And as I said last year, and will say every time I come, please mark your calendars for this event, and come if you can. This year, the event will be held on June twelfth, at the River Forest Public Library, starting at eleven A M. I wanna say a little about Juneteenth, because although it is a federal holiday, you might not know a lot about it. So I, I want you to know a little bit about why I'm asking for support. There's a small committee working to make this event amazing, and I just want you to know a little bit about it. Juneteenth has a story, and it begins two and a half years before the liberation of enslaved people in Texas. The Emancipation Proclamation was officially titled Proclamation Ninety Five. It was drafted on September twenty second, eighteen sixty-two. This was after the bloody Battle of Antietam, which the Union won. But over twenty-two thousand Union and Confederate troops were killed or wounded. The Emancipation Proclamation was issued on January, and would go into effect on January first, eighteen sixty-three. Its purpose was to free slaves in the Confederacy, and to cripple the South war machine. The most definitive end to slavery, however, required Congress to pass and states to ratify a constitutional amendment. But passing that amendment, as you might imagine, was not a smooth process. And while the amendment was being debated in Washington, some two hundred and forty thousand, let me say that again, two hundred and forty thousand, people who had been freed from bondage in eighteen sixty-three were still slaves in Texas. So slaveholders moved people to Texas to avoid emancipating them. So when General Gordon Granger issued the short and direct order on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, he read it at the courthouse, he read it at the custom house, and he read it at the A M E church, and it just said, that black people were free, and that they needed now to work for wages, and that they should not be idle. But they were no longer considered slaves. Now, over time, black folk, African Americans, shaped Juneteenth into a Freedom Day. A joyful day of celebration. And thanks to decades of work by thousands of activists, allies, and elected officials, Juneteenth is a federal holiday, and, as you know, Governor Pritzker signed a law making Juneteenth an official state holiday. Juneteenth is a time to celebrate hope, learn, and work for a nation where everyone is welcomed and respected. We do not have a nation today where everyone is welcomed and respected. And if you don't believe that, see me afterwards. But we live in a community in River Forest, where everyone should be welcomed and respected. And we have to do some intentional work so that they know that. That's where you all come in. The small committee working on Juneteenth needs some funds. What are we gonna use the money for? Well, it's a celebration, so we have to buy some refreshments. We want youth to participate, and actually, the organizations that sponsor these youth, or support these youth, we'd like to make a little donation to them, the young people, to let them know, you can celebrate this wonderful holiday, and we can recognize you with just a little bit more than thanks. So we wanna have celebration, we wanna have a little honorariums for people, and we need some publicity, because people won't know if we don't tell them. So that's what we'd like the money for, we understand, um, from Matt, I, I think that there is a line item that we can draw this money out of. So I'm asking for up to two grand to do this, and we won't have to spend it all, if we don't spend it all, then we won't spend it all. If we spend up to it, then we'll spend up to it. But this will make a wonderful celebration for our community, showing that River Forest is where we do this thing of valuing, respecting, honoring people intentionally, and supporting this federal holiday. So thank you for your patience and your time, and I appreciate the support of all of you in this request.
Thank you, Sheila, thank, thank you, um, and maybe before we get to the budget, um, which I think there is a line item, I will just address your concern, I, I don't think there's anybody around this table that won't agree with you, so, that, uh, this is, it's a holiday that we need to celebrate, and we need to celebrate it in a big way. So as I mentioned to you via email, um, I, I believe the village is all in. Um, it has to be more than two thousand, we're all in too. I, I'd ask the D E I committee through Erica, and through Ken, and with Matt, just to work with you to make sure that we got the right number. Maybe it's something larger, maybe it's, it's two thousand, um, so I don't know if that happened, Erica, if you guys met?
So, um, Katie is actually, trustee Brennan is actually on the committee, so she has some of that information.
The D E I committee?
Is on the Juneteenth Committee.
Oh, of where? Where's the Juneteenth Committee, of, of the D E I?
Is that from?
No, it's a separate community committee that's putting on the holiday and the parade for the greater area.
Oh, I didn't realize that, I thought, are you still on the, from the leadership lab type?
Right, it was the leadership lab, I think.
Well, no, I think we're talking about two different things.
Yeah. I'm kind of confused.
Maybe three. Um, so, last year, there was a small group of residents who were interested in River Forest having a flag raising for Juneteenth. Um, some of whom were on the D E I committee, um, and some of whom weren't, um, and, uh, Sheila was on that, and I was on that, and we planned our, the flag raising last year. Um, the village helped us out with some funds, um, but it was never very certain, and, um, so we're asking to have some certainty behind this, so that we know that we can, you know, we've got, we've got willing hands in the village who are, you know, doing the work, but, um, need to know that there is some support this year for funding and, and from the village as well.
And we're partnering with the library as well. Yeah, great, I mean, we'll talk through it, uh, via our budget, but total support, I just wanna make sure that we're doing it right, like, we're giving the right amount of money. So if you're saying that you're responsible for rolling up that number, and providing it to the village, then that's okay, we'll accept that. I just, I was trying to find a place so that Sheila could go to, but if that's the number, then just let us know what that number is, and then we've got it plugged into our, our budget. So I'm not, that, that's not the issue, okay. We just wanted to make sure we got what you wanted and needed. So, um, so, we'll talk through that a little bit, but I'll just assume that you'll work with Matt, uh, on that, um, and then we'll make it whatever it is.
Yeah, happy to, thanks.
All right, so, um, okay, so with that, we'll, uh, begin our presentation and discussion around the proposed budget. No worries.
Trustee Johnson, can you see the PowerPoint?
Yes, I can.
Great, well, thank you, uh, village board, for, uh, giving us the chance to, uh, present the, uh, draft, or the proposed annual operating budget for fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, I first wanna start off by thanking, uh, Finance Director Rosie McAdams, and Assistant Finance Director Kiki Boyer, for really taking the lead on the process this year. Uh, it's a lot of work, that's why it translates to a lot of pages, and a lot of information. Uh, we have just about every staff member who, uh, was involved in creating the budget here tonight, to answer any specific questions that either, uh, Rosie or I can't, uh, specifically address, so, that's the point of this meeting, we're gonna go through, uh, the whole draft document, uh, and answer any questions, uh, tonight. There will be a public hearing, uh, which is a state requirement, as part of the regular board meeting agenda, cause that's what's posted in the paper. And then we will, uh, bring the, uh, ordinance to adopt the budget at the next meeting on April twenty-fourth. With that, I will hand it over to Director McAdams. Oh, yes, sorry. We didn't get our run-through in today, so, um, one minor, uh, comment, so, about a week and a half ago, we had sent out the, uh, uh, draft budget, there were a few minor, uh, scrivener's errors that were caught when we were putting together the PowerPoint. They don't affect the overall budget numbers, but the document that was sent out this past, uh, Thursday with the budget, and it's on the, the website, has all the correct information.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As Matt said, uh, here we are tonight to present the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. The village remains in a strong financial position due to some fiscal policies and decisions over the sev- past several years. I wanna thank the Board of Trustees for their continued support and strong leadership, and acknowledge the hard work and good stewardship of the village staff in the managing these operations. Sorry, I forget, I'm. Um, as you know, we're, we'll do the public hearing, and then it will get approved, um, at the next village board meeting. Say where we, oh, thank you. The village's current budget has received the distinguished G F O A award, uh, budget award, and the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget that we are presenting tonight is designed to continue receiving this prestigious award. The village's board, the village board's goals and accomplishments are contained in this, uh, budget. These goals, and each department's goals, speak to the village's three guiding principles, which are. which are to ensure that the village provides a safe and welcoming community for its residents, business owners, and institutional pri- partners. It hands property values through strengthening the quality of life and implement strategies to stabilize property taxes. The budget document, uh, contains quite a bit of information. The budget message that begins on page eight of your document gives a great overview and summary of the financial information and the key components of the 2024 budget. Oh, I'm going, I'm sorry. There. So as you know, the general fund is our main operating fund of the village. Pardon? Oh. We're playing, it's just tricking me. It's the main operating, uh, fund of the village and the fiscal 2024 general fund budget is balanced. We anticipate that the revenues will increase 6.11% and the recurring expenditures will increase 6.92% in fiscal year 24. Some of the larger non-recurring expenditures listed here will be financed with fund reserves. As a result, the general fund operating budget is presented is balanced for fiscal year 2024. Yeah, yeah. This chart displays general fund revenue by category. Total revenues increased 6.11% over last year's budget. Some key revenues to highlight are, so property taxes include the 4% increase of the tax levy and the annual, the annual increase is based on the minimum of 5% or the annual increase in the CPI, whichever is lower. From December 2020 to December 2021, the CPI increase was 7%. The village board voted to increase the levy by 4% to ease the burden on taxpayers. Revenues include the second installment of the 2022 levy, which is based on that 4% increase, which will be collected in July of 2022, 2023. And the first installment of the 2023 levy will be collected in March of 2024. The first installment that is received in 2024 is based, uh, is based on the prior year's tax levy and it will be 55% of that. That's what we expect. Moving on from property taxes onto state and non-home rural sales tax revenues. Are, these are higher than the 2023 budget amounts due to the passage of the, uh, leveling the plainfield law and the, the increase of 6.5% of, uh, CPI from the 12 months ending in December. We saw large, we've seen large, significant increases in revenues that we had not originally planned for. So not a bad thing, very good, but sales tax revenues are expected to continue to increase, but future estimates are conservative because of the uncertainty of the, in our economy right now. The I, we follow the Illinois Municipal League's projections and what they tell us and they're saying that it's going to, to level out. But obviously, we're still not seeing that. So our, our revenue figures are conservative, but we're still showing increases. Income tax revenues, uh, the same thing. Those are based on Illinois Municipal League estimates and those continue to rise. Ambulance billing revenues, uh, rose significantly in fiscal year 2023 due to the, the GEMT program that the village, um, got into an agreement with the, not got in, sorry. Based on the intergovernmental agreement with, uh, the Illinois Department of Health and Family Services, uh, earlier in fiscal year 2023. This revenue and expense, there's the offsetting GEMT expense, but we've seen significant increases in this revenue, which why in fiscal year 2024, part of these revenues will be allocated to the SIP fund to help fund future street improvement program, uh, projects. Also, we see an increase in refuse revenues based on the contract that the village, um, entered into with LRS Lake Shore Recycling, um, in 2023. Starting in 2024, 3% increase in refuse services in, is included on the five-year contract with them. Fee changes, as I said, ambulance fees were increased based on this intergovernmental agreement that we entered in fiscal year 2023 and the 3% increase in solid waste collection and composting fees based on that contract. No other fee increases are proposed in the 2024, um, budget, but staff continues to evaluate and review any possible adjustments that we may need to do within the, as we go through the year. Now we'll move on to general fund expenditures. Here you can see an overview of gender, general fund expenditures by category. And we'll get into deep, greater depth on each of these on the next slide. First, we'll start with Personnel Services. Personnel services are driven by negotiated contracts with the four bargaining units. We are still in negotiations with Local 150, which their contract ended April 30th, 2022. Fraternal Order of Police's contract ends April 30th, 2023. And I do believe we are, we are close to settling that, that contract. So that's great news. And fire, the fire union contracts expire in, on April 30th, 2024. The budget also includes a 3% adjustment for all non-union positions. The fiscal 2024 budget includes a new, a new position for the deputy chief in fire. And, uh, also the, the assistant to the village administrator position has been eliminated this fiscal year and part-time community service officer in the police department. Now moving on to benefits. The general fund benefits are remaining steady. You will notice that pension contributions have, uh, did get reduced this year. And that is due to, uh, error that the actuaries had found last fiscal year in their calculations. And it was a change in methodology based on a programming change that, and this impact can, they're saying that the change can have an estimated 3% reduction in projected future benefits. So that does help us within our future as we have worked hard to, um, maintain a steady increase over the years based on our funding policy. And the village continues to beat industry trends and insurance premiums. As you can see, the fiscal year 2024 budget includes and a slight increase in PPO, 2.0%. And this was, this was actually, um, prepared before we actually got final numbers, so that number may even be, uh, reduced. And HMO is 9.1% increase and we're seeing an 8% decrease in dental premiums. So that's very good news. Now moving on to contractual. Contractual and services increases are 9.5% from fiscal year 2023. The 911 contribution to Westcom is up 23% due to the number of communities, uh, included in the center. Uh, other, uh, we also see increases in liability insurance and GMET, um, expenses. Like I said earlier, the GMET expenses are, coincide with the revenues we collect. So those will go up, um, as we collect more revenues. But we've accounted for all that and we still are, are significantly above what we expected in revenues. The next slide goes in a little further on some of those contractor, contractual services. So these contractual services include enhancements to ongoing services. As you can see, the list of all these services that we include each year in our, in our budget. Further, the senior snow removal, uh, annual maintenance programs for street and communications. New this year is, uh, uh, ZO1 program, it's a, the, for the fire department, for their equipment, their EMS monitors. We're, we're going to a lease program as opposed to purchasing these equipment through the SURF. It, it allows for the most, uh, current, um, equipment and always up to date on the, on the standards. And so we thought this was a great idea that the fire department brought to our attention. And the other, uh, the fire department, department also is implementing a new software for, to keep policies and procedures up to date and to monitor them and to also, uh, provide, uh, tracking so that we know that employees are up to date on their training and required, um, uh, programs. And just a few other things, we have the zoning ordinance review, the monthly newsletter, communication service freelance, preparation of meeting minutes, emergency preparedness, and miscellaneous public works, um, contractual services. Move on if anyone has any, obviously if they have any questions, just jump in. Sure. I mean, you can, either or.
Well, what do you have, Bob?
So I have a question on the Westcom. So that, that's, that's gonna be a bigger and bigger number every year. What's our alternative? I mean, everybody else is available. Why, why do we need to kind of be the keeper, the key on this?
Yeah.
So the, uh, uh, Westcom, we're always looking for options to consolidate or add other municipalities or join with other municipalities. One thing that Brian Staunton with Westcom did recently was, uh, submit a large, uh, grant funding request with the state of Illinois to kind of, uh, enable us to, uh, attract other entities to bring those costs down, whether it's different partnerships, other neighborhoods, either moving out of this building to join with other entities or, uh, adding, adding here. So that is definitely a conscious effort that Westcom is trying to make to bring on, to s- to split up that, that cost among more municipalities.
So how many, I mean, I don't, I mean, what was the, the number when? And when we had the most number of participants?
Five. I can tell you that, five. So it was Elwood, it was Elwood Park, it was Park Ridge, us, El Park, and, um, Forest Park. So today, there's three of us. So I wasn't quite sure. I wrote it down too. It says, due to other community, increase in other communities. You meant, did I misunderstand? It was leaving other communities?
I meant leaving.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Right. Yeah. So the, 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 Elwood Park and Park Ridge. Park Ridge was, we always knew there, it might have been temporary. But it's a good question and, um, I think what the administration is doing is, is the right thing. And that is to try to find grant money that would allow us to go to a bigger building with somebody else and, and try to create a more of a, you know, economic, um, a bigger economic, um, you know, dollar amount. So if there are.
So I wanted to be the next here. We don't know how long the public grants last.
Well, no, I think that's what I was just gonna say. When, when should we find out about that grant, Tom?
Uh, we, we've been told in June, I believe, was.
So June. But, okay, so alternatively, okay, is if we stay the course, then the, the alternative is to stay what we have or to begin to look to consolidate somewhere else. And that's not an easy thing to do. Um, and it's not necessarily a cheaper thing to do. So, so that would be the alternative. Anything else before I move on?
Uh, I did have a question about the part-time, uh, community officer and just, uh, the services that that's, uh, position performed. What are we doing with that?
I believe, I mean, I can take it or do you wanna answer it?
I could fill in anything you don't have.
Okay. Uh, so I believe the part-time officer was, uh, um, the idea was to cover inst- parking, um, traffic control when we were, um, not fully staffed with, full staffing. And also the, it was very hard to fill that position. You know, no one, they, it was, no one really wanted to work from five to 10.
Sure.
Was that the, and so the discussion that the, the fully staff and what we have was able to handle what we had originally.
That's very helpful. Yeah. I wanted to make sure it wasn't some of the stuff that, um, Officer, like Ben Ransom does, you know, in the community. So.
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Rosie, I have a, um, question, I guess a comment about the waste fees.
Sure.
And, um, when I look at the fee schedule on page 46, it shows, um, an increase for, you know, the landfill, for the compost.
From the budget, page 46 of the budget, if you want to. Fee schedule.
And actually, let's see, it's 46 in the packet, it's 45 in the budget.
The fee, if you look on the side.
Go ahead, Katie.
It says fee schedule at the top.
Yeah.
And, um, it caught my eye because it's a small increase per compost and there's three different sized bins now. So it's a different increase for each bin because I'm assuming it's the 3% increase from LRS. I'd love to see the village make a decision not to increase the compost, even though it's just a small amount, just for principle because we are holding ourselves out as a community that prioritizes, um, sustainability and incre- you know, decreasing our carbon footprint. And we've signed all these agreements promising to do that. And we've got a sustainability commission that has metrics that it's trying to hold to by a certain time to bring down our carbon footprint. And this is something that we can offer our residents to incentivize them to actually do something themselves that will also help themselves and the rest of the community. I would love to see us find a way to, um, not increase the compost to incentivize residents to actually compost. And it's actually gonna save money because then they're not, they're gonna have a lower landfill waste, uh, amount.
Yeah. I, I thought Sustainability talked about this, but I could be wrong. Um, it, I, here, I mean, any with place, anytime we can increase usage, you know, with you, with residents, it's, it's a great idea. I just wanna make sure it doesn't have unintended consequences where it doesn't increase and it just saves residents who are already on it, you know, money. Is, is that what you're saying? With the people that are already composting, it gives them a little savings, which is nice.
Well, I, I guess it's both. We wanna incentivize those who are paying extra to compost, to stay, to continue to compost. And as they compost, they're decreasing their landfill, which helps all of us. And then, um, it also is a statement by the village that says, hey, we prioritize this. We're gonna find a way to hold the price, hold the line on our compost fees. Okay, it's 45 cents change, but I'd like to hold the line on that. I'd like to not, not charge an additional amount and make a statement and say, we do pro- you know, put our money where our mouth is.
Yeah. What is, what is that amount in total?
I know, I'm just bringing it on.
I, I would have to.
So we, we can look at that. I, I think. So we we can look at that, I I think as long as you've got performance metrics around it, like it would be nice to see if other residents would. Come on board because of the freeze, let's say, for a period of time.
Well, my understanding is that we have increased participation since we renegotiated the contract, but I don't know, maybe you know the numbers.
Yeah, good.
I believe we've added about seventy-five additional users from last year, we were um just over four hundred. Um last May, and now we are closing in on five hundred um subscribers.
That's awesome, and I would think that if we held the line on this, if we did not increase these compost fees by three percent, okay, it's. You know, fifty cents a month, I I think if we make a statement about that, I bet we'll get more.
Well, we could certainly try and see what what it does, I mean, if it does increase, then, you know, the incentive works, if it doesn't, then we can re. We look at it, I guess, makes sense, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else before I move on?
No, it's good.
Okay, great, I have to. Moving on to commodities, um the large increase you find in commodities is the. The purchase of the police body, the police worn body cameras for a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Um and uh gas, uh the the increase in gas and oil. Also is seen in this budget, but the police department um is. Today, we chatted also, and they are diligently working on grant opportunities. For these purchases of these um body cameras, so we really hope to to not. Actually see a hundred and ninety thousand dollar expenditure. And then moving on. Capital outlay, this uh is has been put in uh the budget. For initi- initiatives that will be implemented from the traffic wide studies that were done. In fiscal year twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. So as we look at the general fund three-year um projections, the fiscal year twenty twenty-four general fund budget is balanced. As previously mentioned, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars in non-recurring expenditures. It are to be funded with reserves, we're currently projecting deficits of three hundred and five thousand two twenty-four. In fiscal year twenty twenty-five and four hundred and five thousand sixty dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Even with these projected deficits, the general fund balance remains healthy and we still have a a. Nice fund balance to work with for any initiatives that have come up that we may choose to um move forward with. Now, I will let bring it on.
So within the budget document, uh aside from all the very important numbers, there's a lot of information specific to the initiatives and goals. That the village and its departments have, so I just want to kind of highlight a few of those by departments, there's performance measures and. A lot of information in there that's useful to know what progress we've made over the past couple of years. So administration, uh finance boards and commissions, a lot of these are the same each year, our goals. Although we try to set different goals each year, a lot of our basic service are the same, we want to support our committees, we want to safety. And uh maintain property taxes and all that, it's our, it's our charge as local government. So one thing I want to highlight here is that the continued goal to support the um villages advisory boards and commissions, we discussed that a little bit earlier. There is a line item in the uh general fund of the budget that includes uh community uh in employee programs and events. Uh that uh speaks to or includes expenditures that are related to Memorial Day Parade and other events, so we can. Uh decide what amount is required for some of these other events that and requests that will come, uh including the Juneteenth flag raising. Police. One, I want, a couple I want to highlight in the fiscal twenty-four, um at the next village board meeting, there will be a presentation, Chief O'Shea will be. Um bringing on the uh new agreement with Thrive Counseling Center, we have a great relationship with them on providing mental health services. They've come to our quarterly safety meetings to provide education and then also help respond to um. Incidents out in the field, so that'll be a presentation, one of the villages police department goals is to. Continue building those partnerships and providing mental health services as it becomes a uh or continues to be a a major um concern. And the the fire department, uh one of the goals for fiscal twenty-four is to uh update the rules and regulations. Director McAdams referenced the Lexipol program that will help kind of bring that to the forefront, it's been a couple decades since a lot of our. Internal processes and procedures have been updated for the fire department, so that is a a goal we want to get. Caught up on so that all of our procedures are are relevant, that our our first responders are um responding properly and safely. And that'll help with our other goal to improve our our rating for our insur- our insurance. And then public works, uh a few meetings ago or maybe last meeting, we had the presentation on the stormwater master plan. Uh kind of deciding what, how to proceed with that as a as a major goal, we'll have community meetings coming up in the in the spring on that subject. And then also uh the village-wide traffic study, which the survey just wrapped up a few weeks ago. That'll be a a major initiative for the um public works department in fiscal year twenty-four.
Thanks, Matt, um now moving on to the water and sewer fund. So as you know, the water and sewer fund is our only proprietary uh fund within the village and the. This chart displays the water and sewer fund activities in fiscal year twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Water, the water and sewer fund operating revenues are expected to exceed operating expenses in twenty twenty-four. Total expenses are higher because these include the capital items. Cash and investments are expected to decline in fiscal year twenty twenty-four because of the budgeted capital items. The fiscal twenty twenty-four budget assumes average um consumption in water, so that depend that. If that will affect our revenues that we bring in. Moving on, uh the projects, the water and sewer projects that were presented to you uh back in February, these were part of the CIP. These are some of the uh programs that have been added last year in the CIP and included again in twenty twenty-four. Most, uh as you can see, we we budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the stormwater master plan. After we had um the presentation, we've we've we are trying to plan for. Some initiatives to begin that program, whether it's going to take that, like we said, fifty years or. There were, we're earmarking some, and we're, as you will see, the fund balance, we're really trying to plan. For some initiatives for the stormwater plan going, moving into the future years. As moving on then now to the water and sewer rates related to these initiatives that we know we will have to plan for. The water and sewer rates in fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget include a three point four percent overall increase. To cover higher operating and capital costs and increases in the Chicago water rate. The water rate increase from Chicago is sixteen cents. And that is to offset the five percent increase they are going to um. Put through on six one of twenty twenty-three. The city has increases rates on June first of each year by either five percent. Or the increase in the CPI, whichever is lower, so to offset um. They ju- they are implementing another five percent increase. So to offset increases in the cost of water and capital costs included in the previous slide, rate increases were needed. These rates increases go along with future capital needs that have been discussed. Regarding the major initiatives such as the stormwater plan-led service program. And the maintenance of the village's capital infrastructure. This slide shows the estimated future rate increases. These will be reviewed annually to determine if the targeted fund balances meet the recommended twenty-five percent policy. These projections include increases to count account for future projects and to cover. The estimated annual two point two five percent increase in the cost of water by the city of Chicago. Obviously, rates will not be increased until actual amounts are known. And that will be presented to the board for approval before any increases are made. The, as we discussed before, the stormwater master plan was presented to the board and future. Future initiatives will be dependent on the reserves in the water and sewer fund. Now, if we look, this is a three-year projection for the water and sewer fund. These three-year projections have been prepared, assuming the planned water rate increases. Just that were discussed on the previous slide and water, average water consumption. So this could change based on those those assumptions also. Uh cash and invest investments are expected to decrease in both fiscal year twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. So now moving on from water, we move into the pension funds. So uh I mentioned earlier about the pension funds and the um. Uh actuarial analysis that are performed each year, and that determines our future contributions. And they will be adjusted based on actual results. The village contributes the actuarial determined amount or the uh required statutory minimum, whichever is higher. In this case, um as and also, as you know, uh the fire pension fund investments were consolidated. In fiscal year twenty twenty-two with all other Illinois fire fire uh funds, investment funds. And then in fiscal year twenty twenty-three in October, the police pension fund was um consolidated. So we really, the the hope is that, and then, I mean, it's already looking, you know, better. I mean, not amazing, but. Through the consolidation of these pension investments, the opportunity exists to materially and dramatically improve. Long-term portfolio uh performance, so that's really the goal of the consolidation. Any questions on that? All right, moving on, the motor fuel fund, um this fund is is funded through state. Um allotments and the annual street uh resurf- resurfacing in each year. New street, you know, streets are evaluated and these streets uh are the ones that are chosen for next fiscal year. And then the annual maintenance of certain uh snow and ice and crack sealing and street patching. And then also in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, we will be uh doing a resurfacing project. Um using the rebuild funds, these funds we received over the last three years of seven hundred and thirty-six thousand two seventy-nine. And those uh have, this project has to be done by. Twenty twenty-five? So so this will be, this is part of this year's budget. Now moving on to the uh capital equipment replacement fund, so this fund after, I don't know if you recall, but. In fiscal years twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, we um we suspended our transfers, our general fund. Transfers to help was during COVID and it was during some budgetary constraints. So we we reinstated that um transfer in twenty twenty-three and um. We have a have a also transfer in for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. We are also requesting, and it's also on your um on the agenda for tonight's um. Meeting, a uh budget uh amendment to do a one-time transfer of additional funds. To help make up for the two-year suspension because we we have a a. We're we're showing a surplus for fiscal year twenty twenty-three at the end of the year, and we think. It's a good idea to keep this fund so that we're always prepared when in the need of of future capital product. Uh purchases in equipment and and vehicles. The capital equipment fund accounts for all future replacements of capital items. And it's funded by both the general fund and the water and sewer fund. Here are some of the um, this was presented back in February to the board, and here are some of those purchase. These are the purchases that we are planning to make in twenty twenty-four, now that is if. We are able to get those vehicles that we so hard, they're so hard, I mean, I believe. We've already tried to place some orders that were still could be, it could, this could go into fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Just based on the timing of purchases. Now moving to the SIF fund, which is our capital improvement fund. This fund was created in fiscal year twenty twenty fourteen and is funded by several revenues. Um automated traffic control enforcement system revenue, which this revenue is not considered. Uh it's considered non-recurring for budgetary purposes, we've included uh ambulance billing. Uh ambulance fees this year, grants and the portion of parking lots fees. That are to be included um for the parking lot reserve, and that's used, those funds are used for any repairs to those parking lots. It accounts for various capital improvements, including computer systems, alleys, computer parking lots, street scape. Village Hall and Public Works um improvements, you'll also notice in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, there is a transfer out. And that uh that is to account for the debt service payments that uh the debt that was issued in twenty twenty-two. For the Green Alley project.
On this slide, I just want to highlight a few uh uh additions, we had presented the uh the CIP back in uh February. And there were a few things that were coming up around that time that we haven't inserted into the budget document, so I want to highlight them to to make it. Clear that those have been added, uh so one of those was uh the second floor upgrades was originally presented at a hundred thousand dollars, this was. Increased to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to incorporate some of the uh uh fire and police department improvements that. When we were going through our department meetings, they were included in as some of their operating budgets and they, so we decided that it would be more appropriate in this capital. Capital fund, and then also the Displanes River Trail expenditure, that was something that came up after the presentation, this is a expenditure for. Some of the uh uh engineering work uh that the uh the village will need to pay to help with that uh project. And then also, it's not in the SIF project, but the um it was an increase in the general fund that uh Rosie touched on a little bit earlier, that. Traffic implementation was originally presented as a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, was increased to three hundred thousand dollars to incorporate what may come of. The village-wide traffic study, that original number was just specific to uh an estimate that staff had created from the northeast. Traffic study.
Matt, can I ask a question about the um electric vehicle charging station amount? I'm I'm assuming that the staff is tuned in with the comm ed, um beautiful or electrification. Uh money that's available, they dedicated a hundred million for the next three years and like fifteen million of that just to. Electric charging stations, I'm imagining that you're keyed in on that.
Um so, yeah, we are identifying and pursuing any um grants, whether it be federal, state or private funding. For the electric vehicle charging stations, we did um recently apply. We did recently apply for one COMED grant. It's a competitive grant, so we will see what happens. But yes, we are monitoring and pursuing those funds.
Thanks.
Thanks, Seth.
And the good news, too, I think, is you're partnering with some surrounding communities, hopefully with, you know, to try to get some of those grants, too, overall, which is important because, like you said, some of these grants are, you know, highly competitive.
Yeah, that's correct as well. The Cross-Community Climate Collaborative is also looking to identify grants and sort of use the economies of scale of all of the communities seeking funding together.
Okay, we'll just take a quick look at future years. For fiscal year 2024, the budget includes those one-time expenditures in the general fund, which include implementation of software, capital improvement projects, police mandated equipment, and salary items, all being financed using available reserves. It is balanced as presented. This slide is always a very good slide to help look at the pension obligation that we've seen over the last 10, 15 years. It shows increase in pension contributions and the decrease in the general fund property tax levy for all other purposes. This has decreased by 407, the general fund portion has decreased $470,674 since 2014. The expected contributions will be more consistent and stable with the new consolidation, though, I think. We'll see, we'll see this level out, I believe, in the coming years. We, as you know, we, the village continues to beat industry trends for health insurance premiums, property, casualty, and workers' comp. We continue to budget conservatively and strategically draw down on fund balance for non-recurring expenditures in lieu of revenues. We maintain the normal salary growth to be competitive in this, you know, obviously, we see it and hear it in this industry, how it's vital for our core services to keep and maintain employees. And we are a service organization, and if you look at this stat, we, 91.3% of our general fund budget is allocated to salary and benefits and contractual services. So it's, it's, it's all the service we provide as a village to our residents. That is where most of our expenditures go. So the 2023 property tax levy can include up to a 5% increase on the Consumer Price Index. The price index will be, will be, using this next year for the tax levy will be 6.5. So obviously, you know, we'll, we'll have discussions in the board. We'll decide what we choose to levy on next year's tax levy. And we will review, we always are reviewing current fines and charges for services to see if there's any recommended amendments where we can, where are appropriate. So next steps, despite the challenges, we're in a strong financial position. We will, all departments remain focused. We will continue to search for, you know, grant opportunities at every available time that we can. I know all departments are always looking for the grant opportunities. And so, this includes our, this concludes our presentation. Obviously, Matt already spoke to the Assembly of the Budget, and the administration of this document is a team effort and involves the hard work of many members of our team, many of who you see here tonight. Many thanks to each of them for their good work, and if you have any other questions.
So first of all, congratulations to Matt and the team. It's, again, another great job. The one thing, so the whole document is about 269 pages, and so on a Sunday morning with a cup of coffee, it's a lot to go through. But I would encourage residents to look at that 15 pages that Rosie suggested earlier. It's like pages eight through 22. If you want to know what we're doing and how we're going to do it, that's where it's all kind of encapsulated. You don't have to read, the numbers are important for governance, but understanding those 15 or so pages really is, as residents come up and we talk about different things from week to week, it'll really give you an idea of where we're going and what we're going to spend our time on over the next year. So again, I want to congratulate the team. And again, I thought, you know, your comment on those pages, Rosie, was right, was spot on. And again, I'd encourage the residents to read that, so thanks.
Thanks, Bob. Any other comments from the trustees?
Congratulate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you, Matt and Rosie. Nice job, Kiki, and all the department heads that are here tonight. Thank you for your hard work and very proud of the board and our work that we do day in and day out for our residents to make sure that, you know, a balanced budget is real important for the health of the community. So thank you for all the work, appreciate it. All right, Matt, is there anything else on the?
I would just say, if there's any questions from the board, to let us, let us know prior to adoption, we'll be happy to.
All right, super. Got something else? Okay, well, hearing no other questions, so we'll adjourn the committee the whole meeting? Yeah.
Okay, just for a break.
Yeah, we're going to first adjourn, we have to close this, so I need a motion to adjourn and a second?
Move to adjourn.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
And Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Okay, very good. We're adjourned our committee the whole, so those that joined us, welcome. If you wouldn't mind giving us one more minute just to regroup ourselves, and then we'll go ahead and begin our general session, or general village board meeting.
Yeah, we talked about it briefly before the meeting with Justice Jeff.
Oh, that's fine. No, I, I...
I'm okay, I just didn't know where it landed.
We have some people from the DEI advisory group who are working on it, yeah, so it's really great, but...
I just didn't know if you wanted your committee, and now again, it's fine to kind of keep your...
I'm, I'm assuming, like, we will just sort of, yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, so, wonderful, thanks.
Unfortunately, it depends on what time everybody else leaves. How late I... So I planned that coming in today. I did, I left and went to the gym, and then I came back.
Oh, yeah.
Running slightly late, we'll go ahead and then open up our regular scheduled meeting. So welcome to our meeting. It's April 10th, can't believe it. So I'll ask the deputy village clerk to please take the roll call.
Trustee Bachner?
Here.
Trustee Gillis?
Here.
Trustee Vasquez?
Here.
Trustee Brennan?
Here.
Trustee Johnson?
Do we get to let him in telephonically again?
Yeah, we should, we should do it separately because it's a new meeting.
And Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Okay, hang on one minute, Ken, we're going to bring in. So if I need a motion to allow a trustee Johnson to participate telephonically due to work applications.
Make a motion to allow trustee Johnson to end telephonic work applications.
Second.
Okay.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
And Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Okay, welcome, Ken, if you're there. There you are.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, okay, let's get to, sorry. Pledge allegiance, if I can ask you to please stand and say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so we have quite a few citizen comments, mostly regarding traffic. Is it regarding 7A, or is it just, I mean, I'll let you speak now, or do we want to wait till 7A? I just wanted to give options to the community. If you want to speak now, we'll let you come on up and speak now, we'll get through this fairly quick. So I'll ask Ed Kemper to come up.
Good evening. I'm Ed Kemper. I live in the 1400 block of Bonnie Bray. I am speaking tonight to oppose the barriers in place on Harlem at both Greenfield and Lemoine. Apologies for a pretty low tech.
That's all right.
But I think it helps visualize a few points that I would like to make, at least. This is an overview of the traffic here, Harlem, William, Division, Greenfield. This car represents my wife's commute home from northeast Oak Park. The car, if it were going west on Lemoine, would be one half a block to the alley, half a block to our garage. The, that's the blue line. The red line represents my wife's drive home now with the new, with the new, with the barriers in place. The car takes a left on Harlem. Right about here would be about where you'd be approaching the alleyway. Right about here, the car would be probably in the garage. Somewhere around here, she'd be in the living room. The drive really is straight down Harlem. And I know, I know, everyone knows this, I just want to point it out. The drive is down Harlem, you hit the Division Corridor, you speed down William, just kidding. And then, Greenfield, you know, hello, I know this car shouldn't be here, but here it comes. So, and then, back up to the alleyway. So, I guess I would just ask a few questions. Let's look at this map. If this, which car is causing the most traffic in River Forest? This red car or this blue car? Which, the driver, which car is safer? The driver in the blue car, the car, the driver in the red car? Which car here, or how does this car get to Yoke Restaurant if it's here? Which car creates more pollution? This, this car or Car B? Am I, am I just being self-centered up here and pointing out, like, this is just one car? This just happens one time? Or is this really all the traffic from Oak Park trying, moving into River Forest? And so, I say that, I don't think it's one car here. It's, and this is a really dense block. There's, I mean, my next-door neighbor is a 19-unit condo building. So I'd say there's a lot of density here. It's a lot more than one car. And I'd also point out, all cars coming from the south are basically doing the red loop. All cars from the north are doing the red loop. From the west, it's fine. I know safety is an issue. Which car is safer for the River Forest schoolchildren? The blue car or the red car? I just, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this. I've not understood all the forces that be or whatever. Those are simply my observations. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ken. Ken, Ed, sorry. Okay, Dr. Nusfora, and I just want to, right, I know I'm probably, I'm killing it, and I'm sorry. I shouldn't be killing it. Yeah, I know, I want to hear.
All right, so I'm, I'm going to be brief because I've been told that my, my talk was too long. So I cut it short. I just have three points that I would like to make, okay? The first one is that we know this both from the March 15 meeting and also from an updated petition where we have somewhere between 250 and 300 signatures of residents who oppose the barriers. So I, my, the first point that I want to make is that the vast majority of residents who expressed an opinion believe that the barriers, including Saka, have actually made things worse. And we just heard one, and respectfully ask that they be taken down. Now, the second point that I would like to make is that I was told that the whole thing why the barriers had been set up was because there was cut-through traffic, and therefore, this was a way to reduce cut-through traffic. But what happens, in fact, is that the traffic now has been pushed to William and Monroe and Jackson, and we know that because I've been walking those streets, asking for signatures, and people have been telling me that, in fact, the traffic has gone up, which, of course, it will happen because you're close to streets and the cars move somewhere else. And, you know, they go down Monroe, Jackson, and William, then they will take Greenfield or Lemoine, then they will turn right on Southbound Harlem, and here we have the cut-through. So the second point that we have, that I want to make is that the barriers have done virtually nothing to reduce the cut-through traffic. What they have just done is to reroute it, create a new congestion and new safety problems. And we know about the congestion because people have been showing photos of line of car on Greenfield and on the alley. Now, the third point is this, and this is actually a request that I have for the board members. If the board members decide to keep the barriers, please give us the factual, science-based reasons of the decision and show us, please, a professional study that endorses the decision so we can understand the utility of the barrier. This has not been done. The Claude O'Callaway Report was available online for all residents, and that was good. It was rejected in favor of another plan, mysterious. We respectfully ask to know who made this plan and to see the science-based and fact-based reasons of this plan, as it was done for the Callaway Report. From what I've heard before, and also I've read the budget, so a page 244 of the budget, if I'm not mistaken, the village has budgeted a total of $300,000 for the installation of permanent barriers, plus what was already spent for the temporary barriers, and plus the Callaway Report. and plus the Callaway report, we are close to four hundred thousand bucks for measures that have not been explained to us and that have actually made traffic worse. I think that is fair to the residents who pay for that, to see the study proposing this project and the qualification of the persons or company who support the project. And when I speak about qualification, please, I mean, traffic qualification, safety for traffic, uh, cars, the speed for traffic, I don't want to, to know qualification for traffic in airports or on train stations, those are not good enough. So, qualification is with respect to traffic. People who know what they're doing and can tell us not only why these measures are necessary, but also what, they, they can predict what will happen if we do this or if we do that. So, I please ask, I officially ask to please see the study if any kind of barriers, either on Greenfield or Lemoine or Clinton or Bonnie Bray, anyone, please, I think I'm entitled to see a professional study. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Escobar?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, hello?
Good evening. I have some bad news. The bad news that is that I prepared a twelve double-page report, but considering that you don't have that much time, I reduced to half-page. Let me tell you briefly how I end up in River Forest. Actually, I arrived June the second, nineteen sixty-five, to the Good Opah Hospital. There was a program to help Bolivian physicians, and they helped us with the Catholic physicians in Chicago. And they helped us to come and take the tests and so, and level us with the American graduates. So, I did that, and when I was working at Opah for one year, I met Dr. Joseph Costrovala. He was that time the chief of plastics and reconstructive surgery at Good Cook County Hospital. Historically, Cook County Hospital in nineteen sixty-five was the largest hospital in the world. It had almost thirty-five hundred beds, and it had only thirty-five operating rooms. So, Dr. Costrovala lived in William, uh, River Forest, and then, so I was impressed with that. When I was a resident in internal medicine at Columbus Junior Medical Center, Dr. Henry Rossi, who was the dean of Rush Medical School, but he ended up at Columbus, he lived in River Forest, and I asked him, and then, because thanks to my uncle Joseph, I came speaking English, that helped me, like General Patterson would help me a hell of a lot. And then I was able to communicate. And I asked Dr. Rossi, I said, how much would a house in River Forest would cost? He gave me a big smile and he said, Jaime, do you know how much it costs to cut a tree in River Forest? So, I looked at him and I was going to say, Dr. Rossi, I don't know and I don't care, but I was polite. And that ended up. So, six years, six years after I arrived, we bought the house and we moved January nineteen seventy-one to Good River Forest. I was enchanted with the, with the neighborhood, the city. The only thing I resented, when I was, I'm flying to Bolivia or other parts in the world, I like to talk to the person next to me and she asks, she or he asks, where do you live? And I said, in River Forest. And they look at me and say, where is that? I said, oh, next to Park. Ah, Opah, Opah, okay, so, it's fine, but I forgave them. Anyway, going to, oh, the last part of the story is that Dr. Rossi, a few years later, and then I was in practice already, and he lived in a mansion in River Forest, I forget the street. He met me in a meeting at the Chicago Medical Society and he said, Jaime, would you ask one of your rich Bolivian practitioners to buy my house? So, I didn't want to remind him about the tree. Okay, that was a little bit longer story. Now, coming to the point of traffic. First of all, let me tell you from the bottom of my heart that, and maybe you can pull both of my ears. While I was in practice, I was busy and I didn't have the time to come here. But I am very happy to meet you, to know you, and all of you, they look like wise, sensible persons and good leaders, because that's why, because you're leaders, you're here. And I think that if I would be a surgeon, a neurosurgeon in patient, I would remove the barriers myself. Of course, I would get in trouble, definitely. But I am an internist, a clinician, and we clinicians, we try to make the diagnosis, differential diagnosis, see what is the disease. In this case, I think we have a fairly good-sized disease with these barriers, which I don't think are helping completely. First of all, I have to say honestly that I, I did not know that the barriers were coming and it was surprise. I was surprised that I, fortunately, there were no officers. And when I turned, still was able to turn from north to Clinton, and it says, not entered, it was a barrier. And I said, oh my God, but then, then I went south. And one day a lady told me, you cannot come from here. And I said, but I live here in Clinton, so anyway. But then, of course, I, I learned and there were officers and I didn't do any, this happened a long time ago. Now, what I want to tell you is that the barriers, I don't think are helping because, eh, as a good citizen, which I belong to this nice country now, we had the, do not, no left turn from seven to nine, no left turn from four to six. And that was working well. You see, you just have to remember, and if you forgot about the signs, you have to go all the way to North Avenue and learn your lesson. But then, I believe that the possible solution to this problem is that you have to really think seriously and carefully that we, the citizens of the northeast of River Forest, we think that the barriers will not help that much. The barriers are created problems with the gentleman presented and so. And then, it is making my life difficult, more difficult. I am a, I call myself a super senior. And then, so, then I have to remember that I have to go for Division and so. And then, Josephine, Dr. Nusfora mentioned about the budget and so. And then, the question you, nice ladies and gentlemen, have to ask, is it worth to spend that much money to put some barriers that eventually will not help? The traffic will not. I do agree, I understand that some, I wouldn't call it bad drivers, but fast drivers, they want to cut the corner of Harlem North. But as far as I can tell you, I didn't see a significant increase, you see, of that traffic. Therefore, I am opposed, and I think you will make the right decision. And that's why you are the leaders and we are the citizens. And your decisions have to be fair and good for the benefit of the Good River Forest. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dr. Okay, so Novak, I don't know, would both of you want to come up at the same time or, or? Novak, Novak?
Yeah.
And I just want to remind everyone that comes up, we try to have a five-minute limit just simply so everyone can talk and, believe me, everything you say is so important. So, we just ask that you stay within the five and try to be succinct, that's all.
All right, thanks for the time tonight. My name is Darshana Novak, I own Novak Orthodontics, I've been up here before. I am up here again requesting the remover, removal of the barriers, especially along North Avenue and Clinton. I am one of the businesses that the, the barrier has created the corridor of some of us there. And it's creating inaccessibility to our practices. It's creating, um, safety concerns within the corridor of cars not being able to really navigate properly. It's causing speeding cars down the alleys. I mean, you know, I, we, we attended the Traffic and Safety Commission, the meeting. And I don't know that there was, there was obviously a lot of time put into these decisions, but I'm not sure that we got answers about the thought that was put into these decisions. There was, um, you know, there's data, there was a study. And I'm just wondering, did anyone ask the experts of this study why they suggested not putting these corridors in, why they suggested not cul-de-sac-ing these areas? Because that's exactly what the report stated. So, I mean, I think, um, like in an effort of what other people are also saying, more thought, not, not necessarily more time, but more thought should be put into these decisions. And I am opposed to the barriers and I am requesting that they be removed.
Right, thank you, thank you.
Robert Novak, partner with her at the business at seventy-three fifty-one West North Avenue. You guys took the suggestion of the Traffic Safety Committee and I strongly suggest you take the suggestions that they made at the last Traffic Safety Committee meeting in consideration and do what they said. That, do what they say to do, to start the process of reevaluating the catastrophe that's happening on the northeast corner of River Forest. It will be a cancer and businesses will start closing and you will never be able to replace them until these barriers are removed.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, Patrick Burke?
I've been in the village about ten years and, um, I'm on Clinton. And I can count the number of times that I have gone down, I used to call it, refer to it as Williams. I don't anymore because I call it Bill now, because I've had to go down it so many times, I feel, you know, more attached to it. Literally, maybe three or four times, and that was probably because I went to the little clinic there a few times. And it, literally, if I'm going south on, on Harlem, when I get to north, if I'm, if I'm lucky, the light's green and I just go down half a football field and make a right turn on Lemoine, and then I'm basically home. Now, literally, it's like the red line and the red, the red car that was talked about, the first person to talk. I'm traveling three or four times as far. Or if I make a right turn, then I'm forced with the notion of going all the way over to Lethrop or, you know, standing in line with the other people trying to make a, a, a left-hand turn to go south on any other one, on one of the streets, whether it be Williams or whatever. So, I don't, I don't, I didn't perceive that there was a problem. So, I came home from the airport one time and there it was. And I, I was in Uber and I said, well, just go around it. Because, you know, he didn't want to go down the alley because he saw a sign that said, not a thoroughfare. So, we went around it. And every time I go north on Clinton, which I try not, or, yeah, on, which I try not to do, but I'm allowed to go through it, I meet somebody who's sitting trying to figure out what to do. The other day, someone literally made, backed up on the North Avenue. Successfully, but it's, you know, a terrible maneuver to make. But people are very confused about what to do and the alley traffic is, is a bit of a nightmare. So, thank you.
All right, yep, thank you, Patrick. Okay, I'm not quite sure I can read the first, is it Pete, Pete Tamiris? Pete? Pete, yep?
Yes, sorry.
Here, we're here again, and the problem is for the barricades. I would like to know whose decision was to put those barricades on? They make all the citizens so difficult and so aggravated, and including myself too. I work in the city and always I turn on Harlem, go south and take Lemoine to go to Jackson Street. The first day when you guys installed the barricades, I, I turned and I saw barricades. I said, okay, I'm gonna go to the next one. I go to the next one, was barricade. And then I, I drive all the way to Division and I go to Jackson and I come down all the way to North Avenue, which I live. I don't know whose decision was, I don't know if the village has any, how can I say? But, no, I disagree for those barricades. And I hope, you know, you people listen to everyone and someday we take them out. Because if you close them up, Clinton, Bonnie Bray, close them up, William, close them up Monroe, close Jackson, and then we're gonna be staying in the River Forest and we can't get out. You tell me, why you don't go straight from North Avenue east, west, to turn on my, my street? You know how much traffic is it? I can't wait, only I can wait, you know, when the, the left light turns red and then I turn. So, I avoid to go from there and always going south and turn right to Lemoine, to Lemoine. So, that's my opinion. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, thank you, Pete. Beth Hiferman?
Hi, my name is Beth Hiferman. I own property at seventy-three sixty-five North Avenue, where I've been practicing dentistry for thirty-five years. And I stand with all my fellow dentists. We have just chaos in our little section. Cars speeding down the alley, cars very confused as to how to navigate, getting, finding parking. It used to be a very simple situation in our area, and now it's just, it's a safety concern. And I just wanted to agree with all, to remove the barricades.
Thank you. Lisa Economos?
Hi, I'm Lisa Economos, I know most of you. I live at fourteen thirty-nine Clinton in River Forest, and I've lived in River Forest for most of my life. I thought it was important tonight to go over some things that I haven't seen in the minutes, and I think it's really important that this be included. The chronology of what occurred here is something that I don't think the village wants to see recur. But if you recall, in January of twenty-two, the village signed off on a traffic safety study with KLOA for the northeast quadrant only, even though you were anticipating doing a village-wide study at a cost of about sixteen thousand dollars. That study was produced, two hundred-plus-page study was produced on July eleventh, twenty-twenty-two. The traffic analysis that was done, which included, you know, people out there surveying a study of the accidents that occurred at the intersections, et cetera, over two hundred-plus pages, did not in any way support the residents anecdotal complaints of traffic issues with respect to speed, volume, or accidents. In fact, the study found that the roads were operating as they were designed and also consistent with like roads within the village and also within the statutory recommendations. That report recommended a number of traffic calming measures to be considered by the Traffic and Safety Commission and various tools that could be used. The Traffic and Safety Commission did not like that report and asked the KLOA people to go back to the drawing board and come back again to their meeting in September and that they come back to the Traffic and Safety Commission with additional recommendations and in fact said, consider doing the barricades like what was done. KLOA did that, they came back, they amended their report at the beginning of September, prior to the meeting, and provided three exhibits, A, B, and C. None of those exhibits supported putting in the barricades. In fact, they even, they were traffic- In fact, they even, they, they were traffic calming devices included, putting in speed bumps, a, a variety of different measures. But I think what's most important is that the report said other considerations were evaluated and not recommended. They specifically included the use of the barricades that are, that have been implemented by the village. In fact, what happened then was on September twenty-first, the Traffic and Safety Commission met again. KLOA presented their findings. The commission said, thank you very much, we don't agree. And then, sue spontaneous, the Traffic and Safety Commission said, let's put up the barricades and see what happens. We'll just say to the board, we're gonna make this recommendation, but let's make it, tell them, just do it on a temporary basis. So, in fact, that's what happened. The recommendation came to you. That recommendation, that I read the memo in support of it, did not advise you. And I don't know if you read or it's a two hundred plus page report, but two things about that report that need to be considered. One, it did not support that there was a problem with traffic in the Northeast quadrant. Also, it specifically recommended that they, you, we do not put in the cul-de-sacs or barricades that have been implemented. And in addition, it explained why we shouldn't do that. Because it would impact the businesses who you've hurt. I mean, it, 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 that, that report told you why you shouldn't do it. Unfortunately, it came back to you with the recommendation of the Traffic and Safety Commission. I don't know, you know, the nature and extent to which you were gonna delve into it. But the other problem was anytime the Traffic and Safety Commission gets a request from someone in the village to do a minor traffic change, their own rules require, like, let's say you wanna put in a, a, a stop sign. They require that the person who's presenting that get an area which they determine, seventy-five percent of the residents within this area have to sign off on a petition that supports that. Instead, what happened here? There was no notice to anyone in our area that this was even a consideration, but instead it went to you. You should do it. No one said, we're recommending it, it's our idea. You know, this report we got was bad, the people didn't do a good job, we don't believe them. We don't believe what they're telling us is gonna happen when it, when they implement this. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the thought process was, except that maybe they thought, well, we're telling the board to do it on a temporary basis, then everything would be okay. Well, as you know, everything isn't okay. There's been a huge outcry by the residents in the Northeast quadrant who've, who frankly, I mean, I've lived there, you know, since nineteen eighty-six. We've not noticed an issue like this. Having said that, um, I, I think it's really important to go back and note, number one, as we understand it now, the barricades are not temporary, they are potentially permanent. Number two, the, um, the, uh, I, I think it's really important to note that the, uh, the barricades appear to be an effort by the Traffic and Safety Commission to address the concerns of some few residents from the Northeast quadrant who continued to come to these meetings and complain. And that, and made anecdotal complaints that they were having cut through traffic and speeding going on. And so the Traffic and Safety Commission chose to ignore that study and, and make a recommendation to you to go through with the barricades. We certainly don't want anyone in our village to think that that's how we do business. That a few people can come in here and complain and complain repeatedly, repeatedly, and then we do the right thing and get a study, but instead of following the study, we try to address the concerns of those people who come and are complaining the loudest. I, I don't think that's a message we ever wanna send here. I think that the only reasonable way to address this issue is for you to remove all of the barricades that were implemented as a result of this recommendation and revert back to the traffic pattern that has been in existence for a very long period of time. And then in addition, make sure, if, if, if you, you know, let's be fair, let's address these, these ongoing concerns. If you don't believe the results of the study of KLOA, then include the Northeast quadrant in the village-wide study. Doesn't that make the most sense? Then in that fashion, you'll double check KLOA. They're saying that the, that they don't believe their report. Then I think it makes sense to include the Northeast quadrant in the study. Our understanding from the Traffic and Safety Commission meeting last month was that in fact, and it makes sense, that the Northeast quadrant wasn't going to be included because they had just been studied. Given everything that's transpired here, if we truly believe that there is an issue in the Northeast quadrant, then let this Thomas engineering firm who we're paying another, you know, almost hundred thousand dollars to, to do this, let them go back and look at the numbers they got from KLOA and, and let's make sure we're doing the fair thing for everybody and, and take it from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, Kate? Kate Byrne?
Hello, Kate Byrne here. I have been here before a couple of times. Um, I've raised my children in the neighborhood. I've been here for over thirty years. I live at fourteen eleven Clinton Place. I'm very frustrated by the barriers. Um, people to come, try to come to my house are frustrated by the barriers. My kids came for Easter and they're like, how do we get to our house? So, you know, I can't go right on Clinton Place from North Avenue. I can't go left on Greenfield from Harlem. And it's very frustrating. I can't even go right on Greenfield from Harlem. So, um, I, I know you guys have heard, we've all been here and we're asking that the barriers be removed. There's no scientific basis for why the barriers were up. Certainly, we were not given any notice. And, um, uh, when we went to the Village Safety Committee on the fifteenth, they seemed to say that it was a temporary measure and they, they, they didn't, they seemed to know that it was a permanent measure. So, um, I'm just asking that the board give consideration to what the people who live in the area and on the streets want and that the barricades be removed. Thank you.
Okay, um, Dave?
Good evening, Dave Westerman here. Uh, I am not gonna repeat what everybody said. I'm not gonna talk about the great illustration that Mr. Kemper made or any of the medical community here. I'm gonna talk about one of my favorite subjects, food. Okay? And, uh, for me, it just comes down to it's difficult to get to Yolk. That's basically it. I like Capri too, but I don't go there as often. Okay? And the reason I'm gonna bring this up is I've had experience with Yolk because at one ti, at one time, not long ago, they had another store that was down near where I worked, when I worked in Chicago. It was in the Fremont area of Lincoln Park. I don't know if you're familiar with that area, near the Whole Foods down there. And I used to joke with the people at Yolk that I could hit their place for breakfast and then I could also hit it for lunch. You know, down in Lincoln Park there. But an, uh, interesting thing happened. Uh, the one down in Fremont in Lincoln Park, uh, closed. And I asked the family, what happened to that? And they said, well, uh, you know, I know one of the waitress, waitress at Yolk, her name is Katerina. She said, my nephew, the owner of Yolk, uh, he just has a formula and it just didn't make the numbers. There were two stores that closed, they didn't make the numbers, so we closed it. So my point is, I mentioned to Katerina, I said, hey, anything about the barriers going on? Taki gonna come down? I don't know if he's reached out to you guys or not, I don't know. But some business owners may not reach out and open their mouths, so I'm doing it for him. Okay? Uh, there's another breakfast place up in Oak Park that was there that IHOP. It was a big A-frame. I don't know if it's still standing there or not, vacant. But this is, did they, they closed it? I don't know if it's vacant or standing there still, but anyway. Uh, you know, after, after COVID, they put money into Yolk. That was kinda nice to see in a restaurant. They upgraded. So Yolk, Grandma Sally's, Aunt Sarah's, Golden Bear, as long as we can remember. It's been a breakfast place near, near and dear to my heart. It's tough to get to. So thanks for considering removing all that traffic.
Thanks, Dave. Jill McMahon?
Hi, Jill McMahon. Uh, I own Mint Dental, which is a general dental practice on the corner of North and Clinton. And I have been practicing in River Forest for just over twelve years. I am opposed to the barriers that have been put in place at Clinton and Bonnie Bray. I have really felt the negative impact that those barriers have had on my practice just in these short time period that have, they've gone up. It's exceedingly difficult for my existing patients to get to their appointments. And I don't just serve River Forest. I have patients that are coming from many of the surrounding communities. And so, you know, it's, it's hindered my ability to also retain new patients because, you know, they come for that first visit and it's really difficult. So even if we are giving them everything that they might want in a dental practice, they don't, you know, it can be very, that certainly can factor in. And we are getting complaints nearly every day about how difficult it is to get to our office. Whereas before, we, on a very frequent basis, got comments about how excited patients were about how easy it was to get to our, our, our location. We moved about six years ago from Lake Street to North Avenue and we were, you know, everyone was just so excited that it was just such an easy place to get to, easy to park, easy to find, all of that. And those comments have completely evaporated. I do not believe that the cul-de-sacs, full or partial, are the solution that's needed to address the speeding that's on these village streets. Just as, you know, as already discussed, the, that report predicted that they would have a negative, negative impact on the businesses and they certainly have. And they're redirecting traffic, redirecting traffic in ways that are not desirable. Almost all of our patients coming from outside of River Forest have to now use William, either from Division or from North Avenue to get to us. So that has, you know, just one more source of traffic that's going onto that roadway. I don't think increasing the number of the cars on the street that was identified in KLOA's report as the one that has the highest speeding and, you know, highest amount of speeding is really the way to solve the issue. Additionally, you know, as we've mentioned, we're seeing lots of traffic on the alley and it's presenting quite a problem. I think, you know, I'm not sure if anybody has really talked about, you know, if, if we, I agree that I don't think that there is necessarily a problem, but if we wanna utilize some traffic calming measures, one of the suggestions that was presented by KLOA was to change the on-street parking restrictions on the west side of Bonnie Bray, Clinton, William, and Monroe between North and Lemoine to allow for parking on both the east and the west side of the street. And I think that that could have a benefit for both the businesses and for the residents. Because it's going, by having cars parked there, you're going to have a narrower, you know, roadway for cars to, to be traveling down. So that's naturally gonna slow down the, the traffic. But in addition, the cars that are parking on those streets for the North Avenue businesses are going to stay closer to the North Avenue businesses and less so into the neighborhood where maybe they're not as, you know, welcome. I think we should consider that as a, as a solution to this issue. Additionally, I'm in favor of the proposed modification of Lemoine and Greenfield that came up at the, the last, um, the last meeting. I think it's a fair compromise and I think, you know, obviously there are, you know, we're not really hearing a lot of people that are on the opposite side tonight. Actually, nobody that's on the opposite side yet tonight. But certainly there is a lot of division there. And I think, you know, that's a, if, I think there should be a compromise rather than it being all one way or the other, you know, as opposed to that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Frank?
Good evening, I'm Frank Libby. I'm at William and Greenfield, been there for about twenty-five years. I am also in opposition to the cul-de-sacs and the barricades. I think it's just going to shuffle traffic around. And I think we've heard they, it's been moving to the, uh, to the alleyways and it's frustrating drivers and frustrated drivers tend to, um, speed as well. So I, I don't think it's, it's solving the problem. It's not clear that there was a problem to begin with and I think there are other ways, less expensive ways to deal with this rather than putting in permanent cul-de-sacs and, and permanent controls. I just, I just think this needs to be, uh, thought through, um, in more detail and listen to the report and, and let's get some real data. Thank you.
All right, thanks Frank. See, Dr. Politis is, is constant.
Hi, thanks. Thanks for letting me have this opportunity, Kate. I really appreciate it and you guys have been terrific. I could spend a lot of time because I've already spoken to you before. I'm not in support of the barriers. I, I, I believe that as board, you see that there is more than a little bit of us that have concerns regarding businesses. Both as someone who's lived here forever and also that owns a business and was drawn here specifically because it was easy to get to, as Jill said, it was easy to park. And I will echo her comments. Last six years, nothing but, oh, this is so awesome, we ease, it's so easy, we can park. And now it's not, often it's every day, it's two to three times a day. Like, what is going on here? This is like, guy John Plesbert, who was the deputy commissioner that rebuilt the International Airport at O'Hare was in today, is like, what's, I almost got hit three times just parking in front of your office because of the fact that people come in, they can't figure it out. Backing back on North Avenue, you know, we've seen that as well. You know, we're all, we all, we're all playing in the same sandbox, you know? And we, and we all get along well. My mom taught me at an early age, pick up your toys, you know, be nice to the people in the sandbox and everything works out well. And we respect the work you've done. We respect the fact that the board stayed here till almost ten-thirty at night, Traffic Safety Committee, to hear us. And we really only litigated one issue. That was sort of the Harlem Avenue corridor and Lemoine and Greenfield. Life is about compromise. You know, it, it, it has to win for everybody or it wins for nobody. So I think it is fair, the compromises they put forward. I would encourage you to consider them strongly. And we hope that they have the open ear that they did to us a month ago. I hope they have that same open ear when we talk to them about, you know, Clinton and Bonnie Bray potentially and rethinking it, restructuring it. That's all I have to say and I thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, Ted. Georgia? Georgia Politis? All right, all right, very good. All right, and we have Phyllis on the line. She's our last and final public comment. I don't know, Phyllis, if you're still on Zoom? Yep, she's on mute. Phyllis, you're on mute? There you go. Hi, Phyllis.
Hi. It's my computer a while. Hi, um, so I have three things to talk to you about. And I, I wanna tell you, I just listened to all these, um, comments and I have driven past those barricades. First of all, they're ugly. They're bright yellow, they say, look at me, I'm barricading River Forest. And, um, anyway, I'm, I'm with all of you residents up there who, um, have to go way out of your way to get home and the businesses. Okay, so that's one thing. Um, the second thing is, I'll tell you, um, I'll give you a report on Lake and Lathrup. There was actually, I, I know I sent a letter to all of you last week that nothing had been done. Nobody, we hadn't seen anybody for over a week. But there was somebody there today, one person delivering something he said was for plumbing. The fencing is starting to, um, fall apart, um, the, the fabric. And, um, and one of my neighbors reported, I went to look at it and you, that, um, on, on Ashland, where the fencing comes right up to the sidewalk, they're concerned that there's a space, I think it's actually by the house that's right next to my condo. There's a space at the bottom of the fencing that they said a small child could actually slip through and fall into the hole of the site. I think it's a little bit of a stretch, somebody would really not have to be paying attention for that to happen. But, um, but you might wanna go take a look at that and see if it really looks safe or not. So that's Lake and Lathrup. And the other thing I know I asked you about, um, and I just, um, texted Susan Charette about, um, businesses can't get, uh, composting service from Lakeshore Recycling. You have a number of churches here, I guess none of them can get composting from this. And I, I'm wondering why that happened? Um, and what we can do about it?
Yeah. You did ask about that last time.
So, um, anyway, if you could help. Um, she, she sent me to somebody in the, um, Village, one of the Village apartments. Um, she told me to go to who, Seth Jansen? So I'll try him, but I want to let you know about this.
Yep, we'll follow up on that.
That's all.
We'll follow up, yep. Yep, sorry, Phyllis, you did bring that up last time, we'll, um, we'll get you an answer, for sure.
Yeah, well, I thought that I, when I said this a, a month or so ago, we thought that they were, there was a form to sign up on, on the website, so we signed up. And then we wait a couple months to get it started, and we find out they won't do it.
Yeah. Well, we'll get an answer one way or the other. Okay, that concludes a, a public comment. Um, so for those that, I mean, you could stay, because we will talk more about this in the, not, probably within the next ten minutes, fifteen minutes. So please stay, so we can have a little bit more conversation around the traffic and safety. Um, did you want to, I know you came late.
I was supposed to say I, I am opposed to it here.
Yeah, okay. Right, thank, okay. All right, uh, so, so we'll wait to make comments until we get to that point. So, um, we'll go ahead and, um, get to the elected officials' comments and announcements. So we'll start with, maybe if you don't mind, Trustee Wagner?
Of course. Um, I'd like to begin with a land acknowledgement. So as we begin, we are mindful that we hold these meetings on lands that was once and still inhabited by indigenous people, including the Ojibwa, the Chipewa, Manominee, Pahalwami Nations, and more. We will remember our nation's history and honor the native people stewards of this land that was colonized, and that River Forest continues to be a place many people from diverse backgrounds live and gather. Um, happy late at Easter and Passover to everyone. I hope everyone had a happy holiday. Um, not too much to report this week. Uh, I was invited to be a juror by Dominican University and the Black Metropolis Research Consortium, who is a group of libraries, museums, and educational organizations to, um, to judge high school essay contest in relation to the work of Timiel Black, a Chicago educator, activist, and historian. Um, and very, very interesting essays. Um, and a lot of it was around the work that, uh, these, uh, young people were doing, um, uh, that connected to the, um, the philosophy of Timiel Black. So I was very happy to be a part of that. Um, and I think that's it for me.
Great, thanks Erica. Trustee Gillis?
Sure, I have two things. First, it's, um, Earth Month, so happy Earth Month. On the twenty-second of April, Saturday, there are two events, the Disciplines River Cleanup. And plus, there is the Third Annual Bike Exchange. Um, the Bike Exchange was started by a resident that just thought it was a good thing to do. Um, it has gotten momentum, I think it's a great event. So, um, clean up, like, sket, like, actually register with the Park District to clean up, um, the Thatcher Woods, and then go exchange your bike. Um, the other thing I'd like to do is to wish Harriet Hausman a happy ninety-ninth birthday. Um, her big day was on Saturday, April eighth. For those of you that don't know, know Harriet, she is a long-term resident in our village, and she has done many great things, including she wrote a book about our village. That if you look on Amazon, you can, you might be able to get a copy. I don't think it's any longer in print. Secondly, she is, I believe, still the oldest continually published newspaper columnist in the United States. She does that for the Wednesday Journal every week. Um, and she used to write it out by longhand, but then her daughter now helps to type it, to make it easier for, um, the newspaper. So happy birthday to Harriet, and we wish her many more years to come.
Great, thank you, Lisa.
Just good evening, everyone. I'm going to defer my comments for the next meeting. It looks like we already had a number of residents who've been here for a number of, uh, meetings, so we'll just get on to it.
Okay, all right, very good. Katie?
Um, just a couple things, I'll make it brief. Um, I attended the T- Truth Racial Healing Transformation Gathering, um, with Trustee Wagner, um, this last couple weeks. And, um, I wanted to follow up on Phyllis's comments about the situation at Lake and Lathrop. Um, I did take a look at the Village webpage and saw that, um, it was updated on March third, and it looked like, um, according to the timeline from the developer, um, the detention system construction was supposed to have been finished by mid-March. But I don't know that it, anything's happened since then, or has it been finished? Do we know?
No, the detention system's not finished. The, uh, developer has submitted some revised plans, just specific to the detention system, and we've exchanged some, uh, comments on those plans back to them, um, in terms of their other updates. Uh, we have requested them, um, continuously.
So we should update the website noting that?
Okay. Yeah, and, and I'll just note, um, that, that mid-March date was already a delay of a delay. So, um, again, reiterating, it would be great if the developer would come to our meetings so that we could actually have face-to-face, um, conversation with them, so that they could hear our questions and our residents' concerns, and we could hear their answers, and we could have a better informed discussion. I know you're continuing to ask them, so thank you for that. Um, and then lastly, um, following up on Sheila's comments about the planning for the Village's Juneteenth flag raising. Um, we are excited about the plans this year, they're coming together really nicely. Um, glad that Sheila shared the date, June twelfth, eleven to twelve, uh, at the library, which is our partner in this project. Um, we're working up with a consultant from the, um, Illinois Juneteenth Committee and, um, the National Juneteenth, uh, Foundation. Um, and so stay tuned, and if you want any more information, please reach out to me for that, or to Sheila. Thank you. Oh, and we will follow up with you with the budget. Thank you, Matt.
Okay, uh, Trustee Johnson?
I will also defer my, uh, comments, just other than to reach everyone a happy holidays. Uh, I've been traveling, so I don't have much to update either way. So I just appreciate being here, and I appreciate all the residents' comments regarding, uh, the traffic study issues.
Thanks, okay.
Um, I had, um, I attended the EDC meeting last week. Um, the topic on the agenda was, um, the, the work that was started um, during our comprehensive plan of twenty-one, I believe. And so this is an ongoing conversation, um, not something that is eminent as was, um, erroneously reported. Um, so, um, residents came out, they talked about it. John Housiel, our, our planning consultant, did a nice job of showing various blocking of what development along Madison Street could look like. Um, and again, um, to repeat, um, these are all just kind of samples of what may or may not happen. And really, until we get a plan for something put in front of us, we really can't do all of the steps and due diligence necessary to understand the impact on the community. Um, I think, um, uh, Matt could give an update, but I think we're underway with the demolition of Lutheran Family Services.
Sure, so, uh, the, uh, asbestos abatement, the resumed asbestos abatement work began last Monday. They're making great progress on that work. I talked to our, uh, project, uh, manager, uh, this afternoon on that. They've kind of finished the work on the, the two western addresses. It's a very complicated interchange building. So, uh, that, uh, asbestos abatement should be completed by the end of this week, and then the demolition work will follow shortly after. We want to wait until we have full confirmation that the abatement work is completed and a final report in hand before that demolition starts. So we expect that to be over the next few weeks.
Good, and, and just by experience, you know, our opportunity, having a vacant site versus a building, where it gives us a lot more opportunities to talk to a lot of different developers and people who might be interested in buying that property. So I'm really excited about the fact that building is, is coming down, because we have not had any fights on anybody who wants it. Um, and then just, um, again, I think there are great comments from residents, um, who, you know, who really want to be involved in, and I appreciate that, um, to kind of understand and help us as we go through the process. Once we do start getting some, um, some, um, some interest on the property in helping determine what, you know, what the future of that might look like. And then there was just one other comment that was made that, um, I'm just going to throw out there to ask the question. Uh, we've spent a lot of money on planters around the village, and it was highlighted that, especially in some of those in the middle of Madison Street, where people are finding them to be difficult, number one, but, um, also unsightly in terms of, of maintenance. And as we head into the spring season, is there a plan for us to, you know, kind of beautify our, our neighborhood with those planters, and, and whose responsibility is that? So, um, but it was, it was an interesting meeting, a lot of residents engaged. And again, I really appreciate them coming out and, uh, and spending time with the EDC and, um, Chairman, Chairman Kyler Browden, his efforts, so that was my comment.
When we answer that one question, who's responsible for maintenance? I don't.
So we have a shared agreement with Forest Park to maintain those beds. So that's certainly something we can look into. Um, I don't know where we're at in the process of spring cleanup. I mean, I know we go, Brian, our superintendent of operations just issued a scope of work for proposals for all of the village beds along Lake Street and everything else that we have here intern, more internally. Um, I don't, I would have to reach out to Forest Park. They, uh, I believe McCadam does that on behalf of both villages. And, um, I'd have to reach out to, uh, Sal, the director, down there to see what stage of the process, uh, we're at seasonally, but, uh, certainly can do that.
So, yeah, thank you, Bob, for bringing this up. And, and Jeff, maybe that should be on our regular to-do list. I mean, because it's, I think those beds have been in there for a while. And so it should be something we should have an IGA agreement with. And if we do, we should, now, make sure that it happens.
Sure, and, and I don't want to give the impression that we've been ignoring it since they went in or anything like that. There's, there is an annual program that's down there. I just don't know at what point, like I said, we, we do spring cleanup on our beds. I don't know off the top of my head when we, when McCadam comes in and does spring cleanup for those medians.
Okay.
But that's certainly something I.
So, so could I, could I just add? Um, so when we, after we get through the summer season into the fall season, there were several, um, res, businesses along Lake Street that asked that we do something more seasonal for the beds that we have along Lake Street to, again, generate some activity for the businesses. So if you just throw that on your list, Jeff, thanks.
And we, we did increase the budget, uh, for those, the maintenance of those beds this year for that exact reason.
All right, yeah, and thank you, because I know those, uh, res, uh, businesses appreciate it. Okay, um, so, yeah, just to, um, I, again, to make it brief, a few things. Uh, again, uh, for Harriet Hausman, um, we are going to pass a proclamation and resolution congratulating, uh, uh, her on her ninety-ninth birthday and her achievement, uh, her writing capability and her achievement here in River Forest. Uh, I do encourage people to buy her book, it's, uh, it's pretty cool. Um, so next meeting, if you're here, uh, we'll get maybe, uh, um, a bit to meet Barbara, her, her daughter. Uh, she will come, and we're also commissioning a, a painting, uh, for her, uh, through the fire department. Uh, so you'll see her picture along, um, the, you know, Central Avenue here. Uh, again, as a way to, uh, celebrate, uh, Harriet. She's a, she's a gem in River Forest, so we, we, we like, we love her. Um, second thing is, I, uh, attended, on behalf of the Illinois Municipal League as president, um, uh, DC, I went to Washington DC with about twenty other mayors, uh, throughout Illinois. Uh, and we visited with both of our senators, Senator Durbin, Senator Duckworth, as well as a handful of our federal legislators in Illinois. Of course, all going out there with our hands open for, uh, some federal money. And the good news is that they have it, just like the state, uh, they're, they've got money in their, um, in their budget, and so does the federal government. They passed a significant, uh, trillion-dollar budget for infrastructure. Um, and, and now it's all about us here in Illinois, uh, to make sure that we get it in Illinois, and specifically hopefully here in our region and River Forest. Um, and I know we've, we've been successful, uh, in the past with the rebuild Illinois, even though that's Illinois, not federal funds, but that was nearly a million dollars. So, um, right for just us here in River Forest. So, um, it does make a difference, uh, when you have a, a phone call or at least a meeting with these legislators, um, they do like it. And like, you know, you want to be heard, you got to be seen. So, much like all of you here, um, we have to do that as well to get funds from, uh, the state and federal government. That's all I have to report on mine, so we'll go ahead and move, uh, to a public hearing that we have to do statutorily, uh, to, um, open up the, uh, twenty-twenty-four Village operating budget. Uh, we'll allow anybody in the audience to, uh, uh, make a comment, but I'd like a motion, uh, or I guess open up the public.
Yep, we don't need to open up the, no motion.
Right.
So, uh, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget was presented, uh, earlier this evening at our committee, the whole, uh, meeting, uh, pursuant to state law, the village is required to hold a public hearing on its annual budget prior to its adoption. The, this notice was published on March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, and the budget was available on the Village website and at Village Hall for review. Uh, the notice must be published a week in advance of the meeting. So I invite at this time any public to make comments specific to the budget as part of the public hearing. And then the Village Board will consider approval of that budget at the next meeting, April twenty-fourth.
So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to make a comment? Yeah, please come to the.
Just a small question?
Yep.
Um, because, yeah, can you give me a small question again? I, because looking at the budget, I saw that, uh, three hundred, three hundred thousand dollars have been budgeted for the cul-de-sac. So they have been budgeted, it's not clear to me, or they are considered to be budgeted? And if they're funding, then they will occur. So can you please clarify this point?
Sure, so the, uh, the budget document does have three hundred thousand dollars for, uh, approval of any, uh, implementations for traffic studies, not only the northeast study, but potentially ones that may come out of the village-wide traffic study. Um, just because the, the amount is necessarily in the budget doesn't mean that it will happen. Um, there are, uh, board actions that are required for implementation and approval. Anything above twenty thousand dollars would require board, board action, because that's our village purchasing policy. So there's, uh, every year, there's a lot of projects and initiatives in the budget. We try to be conservative about the amounts we put in there, so that we have enough to do anything that we, that the Village Board wants to do. Um, that doesn't mean that it's necessarily, um, going to happen.
Oh, well, okay, thank you. Okay, you're welcome.
Can I, can I ask a question? If who does the study for the budget?
Uh, Dr. Kujia, can you come, just so it's.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's recorded. Yeah, just if you can come to the podium so that people can hear you on the, yes, it's official. No worries.
Thank you, okay, this time it will be.
Sure.
Uh, my question is, who does the study for the budget? Like in this case, pinpointing the barriers and so? If, um, we think, okay, I am not an economist, but to think about three hundred thousand dollars for barriers or cul-de-sacs or the bump, uh, against speeds and so, that is a lot of money. But my question is, do you have a special committee of economics? Or who, who suggests these numbers?
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So, so the, uh, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars was the estimate from our Public Works staff on the cost of implementing what you all see out there with the, uh, the plastic barriers to make those permanent. So that was based on, uh, us looking at rate amounts for the construction and estimates that we had.
Excuse me to interrupt you, but permanent means cement, uh, stones, or what?
Correct, that would be a curb, extending the curb to make it a cul-de-sac, any landscaping, that would be in, yeah, required as that.
Well, okay, you clarified that the three hundred dollars is just a number, right?
Yeah.
Correct, it could be well under that, and a lot of that is just.
It could be under.
It could be fifty thousand, or something, but well, it could be zero, that's where we are requesting.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
But Matt, but Matt, I think there's a bigger question there that I think you can answer is, the budget is created by your team. So that's, that's what we're doing, is we have highly paid, highly paid professionals who analyze the work that they do.
They don't think so.
And they do their due diligence to come up with the budget for the year, so. Professionally done by our staff who are, who are great. Thank you.
Yeah.
And award-winning.
And what? And award-winning, right. Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, this is, um, and, and in this particular case, Public Works, you know, look at, they look at, they know these costs that are associated with it, so. Um, which kind of addresses the, the person that had the barrier, that, that, again, they're ugly, which is true, but they're not, they're temporary in nature. So, um, okay, any other comments from the public? Uh, so hearing them, we'll, uh, go ahead and take a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Okay, um, so we've got the consent agenda here. Um, we, it would like to approve the consent agenda items A through O?
Make a motion to approve.
Can we pull H, please? Six H?
Make, no problem. Make a motion to approve, uh, consent agenda items A through G and I through O.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments regarding those items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask the deputy clerk to please read the consent agenda and then take the vote.
A, Village Board of Trustees meeting minutes, March 13th, 2023. B, Village Board of Trustees Executive Session Minutes, March 13th, 2023. C, Accounts Payable, March 2023, $1,455,557.88. D, Financial Report, March 2023. E, Budget Amendment for Library Fiscal Year 2023 and Ordinance. F, Budget Amendment for Village Fiscal Year 2023 and Ordinance. G, an intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement between IDOT for Traffic Signal Maintenance. I, an intergovernmental agreement with MWRD for grant funding related to green alleys. J, a llama subscription, llama subscription renewal, Devonport Group USA. K, Annual Contract Renewal with Safe Build Illinois LLC. L, a right-of-way encroachment waiver and agreement for an irrigation system in the public right-of-way with the property owners at 921 Keystone. M, Ordinance Violation Software Licensing Agreement, Docra Tech Systems LLC. N, Administration Department Report. And O, Monthly Department Reports for the month of March.
You could take the vote.
We'll mix it up. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
And Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Now, if I can get a motion and a second for item H, and then we'll discuss the issue.
I move to approve the motor fuel tax resolution for 2023, Maintenance of Streets and Highways.
Okay.
All right.
I pulled it because I think the amount that's being appropriated is 600,000, but that's not reflected in the written portion of the resolution. It says 550,000. So just to make sure that we make the two match up.
You are correct. Just to clarify, the correct amount is 600,000.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great. Thanks. Okay. Any other further questions regarding that item? Hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to please read the consent agenda item and then take the vote.
We do have a motion.
We have a motion.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, we do.
Could you read it, please?
Item H, Motor Fuel Tax Resolution, 2023, Maintenance of Streets and Highways. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
And Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So the item seven, we have no items on six. So seven is the recommendations of boards, commissions, and committees. If I can have a motion and a second, then we'll of course discuss it.
Okay. Then I move to accept the recommendations of the Traffic and Safety Commission and to approve ordinances modifying the barricades at the intersections of LeMoyne and Harlem and Greenfield and Harlem to allow southbound traffic on Harlem Avenue to turn westbound onto LeMoyne and Greenfield Streets while still allowing eastbound traffic on LeMoyne and Greenfield Streets to turn southbound onto Harlem Avenue with signage to be updated accordingly.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right. So Jeff, if you can go through it and then we'll discuss it.
Sure. So I'll quickly walk through the process here. As everyone's aware, there has been some modifications made to the traffic patterns up in the northeast corner of the village subsequent, subsequent to a traffic study that was recently completed. Staff has received a significant amount of resident feedback on those modifications since they've been installed. And at the direction of the village board, the issue was remanded back to the Traffic Safety Commission for discussion at their March 15th meeting. As a result of that discussion, the commission has made recommendations to modify the implementations at LeMoyne and Greenfield with their respective intersections at Harlem Avenue. What was previously a right out only for eastbound traffic onto southbound Harlem Avenue is now recommended as a quote unquote, right in, right out. So now you will be able to enter River Forest from southbound Harlem. You'd be able to turn onto westbound LeMoyne and westbound Greenfield. The commission is also recommending that these modifications be considered temporary pending the results of the village-wide traffic study. We have held off three of the remaining location counts of the village-wide study. We've held off three locations to study traffic on Monroe, William, and Division in hopes of capturing any impacts that these implementations have caused. And pending the full analysis of the survey feedback, there could possibly be more up there. We don't quite know yet. As I said, the commission is also recommending that these modifications be considered temporary until such information is known from the village-wide study. And with that said, I believe interim administrator Walsh has some other information that he'd like to share with the board at this time. Sure. So I just wanted to provide a brief, we don't have to discuss at this moment, but there's also a policy statement included in the packet as a separate action for the village board.
Right.
I just wanted, so we can take these separately. I guess that would be up to just, we can.
Well, I mean, I think we should take them separately, but just for the purpose of clarity, there's two issues. One, we want to take the commission's recommendation and then we want to fix, not that it will fix the issues that we have here, but any, some of the policies that go around or go along. I think we've heard some of the residents say, well, I didn't know about it because our policy was within 500 feet. And so the new policy will extend that to a greater amount of both businesses and residents. And so although that will address some of the issues, it will, it really is the purpose of addressing an issue at large. So I'd like to keep them separate.
Okay.
And we'll go ahead and vote on this and then we can discuss the policy.
So with that said, happy to answer any questions anyone has about the March 15th discussion.
Can I ask a question? And it's not related to the motion I just made, but was there any discussion from the Traffic Safety Commission on the North Avenue entrances?
No.
Okay. Are they going to take it up sometime in the future?
It is certainly the intent.
Well, you should go through that because I think it's fair to make sure that our, our residents know too. So.
Sure, I can address that.
The timetable of all of this, which I think is, which I think was discussed at the commission.
It was, and that's part of what Matt was going to. So I'll just touch on.
Yeah.
So the Traffic and Safety Commission, there was a couple dozen residents that spoke. So the meeting went quite long, as was mentioned earlier. So the Traffic and Safety Commission wanted to address kind of what was the most, the least controversial in the room. Everyone seemed to want to find some compromise in the Harlem implementations where those items. So they had just recommended to address that. And then they had stated that they wanted to discuss the other barriers and any potential complementary measures at a future meeting.
So explain the future meeting to everyone so that they have an idea of what that means.
Sure.
What, wait, I just, what, like the next meeting, they're going to discuss this again, the whole biz?
Correct. Yes. So there, there, the Traffic and Safety Commission meets every other month. Their next meeting is scheduled in May. I don't know the exact date. Third Wednesday of each. Third Wednesday of each month. And potentially July, if they're not able to address, there's a lot of issues at hand. We want to do due diligence. This time around, there's been a lot of input, new information based on what has happened. And the, some of the Traffic and Safety Commissioners felt that the plastic barriers had not been out there long enough to give an opinion on those. They didn't feel that for the two Harlem implementations that is before the board tonight. But there was some comments from commissioners that affects, they weren't necessarily comfortable making a recommendation on that at that time. There's also going to be some additional context with, we just closed the survey from the village-wide study. And we had a couple of questions in there relative to these modifications. There were a total of, I think, 980 some responses that we got to that survey. So it's going to take Thomas Engineering a little while to pour over that data and kind of provide that into a digestible context for the commission. But that would be part of the context that they didn't have at March 15th, that they will have at their May meeting.
That was my question. Is Thomas Engineering going to be working at looking at the data with the barricades at North Avenue?
So as we, yeah, we, we talked about reserving, there are so many counts based on the scope of work that was requested and proposed. We can take a look at so many locations in terms of traffic speeds and traffic counts throughout the entire village. Knowing that there are some issues up in the northeast corner of the village-wide study, we've reserved three of those counts to be placed on somewhere on Monroe, Division, and William as part of the village-wide study. And again, the survey responses might indicate that we need more up there. But we will at least have three to hopefully capture any adverse impacts that are caused by the presence of those barricades.
Okay, thanks.
So I, so I just want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly. So the commission voted four to one to recommend modifications of the barriers at Harlem, LeMoyne, Harlem, and Greenfield to allow right-in access for southbound Harlem traffic. The commission also agreed to share their intent that the measures remain temporary. Those at, at LeMoyne and Greenfield, is that what that's referred to?
The, they were referring to their recommendations relative to the northeast corner of town in the study. So when they, when they said that, they were clarifying that they're going back to their initial recommendations as well. They, they want to see feedback from the village-wide study before they recommend anything be permanent.
Okay. Could I, could I just ask that for the record, that that just be spelled out? That we, that everybody understands, so it's in the public record, that we're going to make this adjustment and we're going to, with the point that was just made, and then we're going to leave the barriers on, on Bonnie Bray and Clinton Malone for right now until the village-wide study is done?
Yeah, I think that was what the commission said, right?
Okay, I, yeah.
Well, but they also talked about taking that up as part of their next discussion in May and July.
No, I understand. But, but as of today, because there's, so from a chronology standpoint, there's, there's been a lot of conversation about the chronology of this. And I just want to make sure that we're continuing to track this as we go along.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Correct. I have another question about the barricades. So what, what will it look like on Greenfield and LeMoyne if we decide to go with a temporary measure for right in or right out left in?
So what's recommended this evening?
You know what I'm saying.
So imagine, you know, pulling out of Walgreens on the Lake Street. There's kind of a, you can get out, but only go eastbound and only eastbound traffic can get into that parking lot or Panera.
Are we going to be able to do that effectively with those barricades? Is that, are they going to be able to make that turn?
We're going to have to kind of try to turn that into a triangle effectively. I tried to make a real quick and dirty exhibit for the packet this evening. It's effectively going to be a triangle that will let traffic out and let traffic in. The concern, the concern is that we've had frankly, some vehicles heading westbound in oncoming traffic lanes. So when we start to open up a legitimate lane for somebody to head westbound, I have some concerns that maybe we get cross traffic from the east side of Harlem Avenue. But that is the recommendation. So we're going to have to open that up to some traffic. And if we can do it with the curb, those barricades are only so big, we'll, we'll be able to figure something out. But it's, it's going to have to let traffic in for, for westbound to some degree.
One of the things that I'm noticing, because I do live in that area, it does seem like the signage on Harlem going southbound is not, is not effective enough. Like there's not, I, I think it needs to be further down, further north on Harlem so that people can see that it's like right turn only.
At this point, there will be no signage for Harlem, southbound Harlem Avenue, because southbound Harlem Avenue will be able to turn right or continue southbound. So the signage that we had that was no right turn.
Yeah.
Will now be removed.
Right.
So there will be no signage for southbound Harlem Avenue.
Right.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
That does. Yep.
And we tried, again, tried to kind of spell that out. The arrows show which direction the signs will be facing.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have two. Well, first, I would just want to say I, I support these motions. I think that makes sense. And then second, I wanted to understand, it had been my understanding that the whole village tra- traffic study was going to include the northeast quadrant of town. And that's one of the reasons why we, that when we made these, when we voted for these changes, I thought we were voting to make them temporary, partially because we wanted to have then the results of the village-wide traffic study, the benefit of that to just help us decide whether they should be permanent or not. But one of the residents tonight said that they did not think that the northeast quadrant was included in the village-wide traffic study. Can you address that?
Sure. So we've, we've kind of waffled for lack of a better term. Originally, the, the discussion started with, hey, there are concerns about the northeast corner of town. So we started to talk about, well, let's do this comprehensively. Let's do a village-wide study. But we don't want to wait because we don't have that budget in. That's a significant thing. So let's not wait for the entire village-wide study to be done. Let's do a separate northeast study so that we can proceed with that. When we issued, okay, cut to several months later, we've budgeted for the village-wide study and we were now in a new fiscal year. Now we're reissuing an RFP for a village-wide study. We've not included the northeast corner because we're still in the middle of actually doing that study at the time. So at the time, we kind of started down these paths. There was no reason to include the northeast corner in the village-wide study. It was, it was already being studied. Once the recommendations started coming out of the northeast study, we kind of kept tacking on qualifiers going, well, let's do this, but let's also try to measure those impacts as part of the village-wide study. So we are still doing that. As I've said, we've, we're going to hold at least three counts for this area to make sure we can try to identify any of those adverse impacts. But we're not going back and doing a full-fledged study of the entirety of this area. That was never, that was never the plan, as, as far as I recall. But we are still going to try to capture anything adverse that comes out of those implementations.
Thanks.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Any further questions? I think clearer. All right. Hearing no other questions, we'll go ahead and take the vote on the, on the, on this motion.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Gillis?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
And Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Okay. Good. And then let's, let's move to the, the village board policy statement on the northeast traffic measures. And this is just to kind of button up, if you will, some of the issues and concerns I think the residents have made, rightly so, on some of their questions. And that is, you know, I didn't know and I wasn't aware. And so this is try to address some of these, some of the issues. So I don't know. So if I can get a motion and a second, then we can discuss it in more detail.
Make a motion to approve the village board policy statement on the northeast traffic measures?
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. So I don't know. Jeff, you want to, yeah, go ahead.
I'll take this one. So this policy statement was kind of devised after attending the Traffic Safety Commission meeting in March, wanted to kind of bring forward a larger discussion to the village board, just to provide some direction as to where we are going, some specific questions to go back to the Traffic Safety Commission and some policy improvements that have come as this learning experience over the past few months have come across. So the policy statement, the first point is to kind of direct any of these requests to the Traffic Safety Commission. This is the commission that has spent the most time analyzing the, these topics. This is where the, the study has been presented. So it's appropriate that they take the time to do it when the village board has a lot of other business to take care of. That's how a lot of our other functions work, the village board, after, takes recommendations from the zoning board of appeals or anything else. So that is the direction to bring any of these requests directly to the Traffic and Safety Commission, which is how it worked back in March. The second is just to state that any modifications to these traffic barriers do ultimately require village board ordinance and action because they are changes to our traffic code or traffic control because there's changes to one-way direction or signage. So it requires board, village board action. Then this third, Director Loser had kind of addressed the, to kind of formally direct staff and Thomas Engineering to collect data from those kind of adjacent streets to the ones that have been blocked. That was Division, Monroe, and William. That had kind of come up with the Traffic Safety Commission and even tonight. So we wanted to just kind of put that in writing that there would be intent to do that. So three of those controls will be placed there for analysis in the next few weeks or months. Number four is just a list of specific questions. A lot of them are kind of obvious, given the, the discussion. It's just kind of.
It's just kind of something for the Traffic Safety Commission to deliberate on, kind of an outline for them to discuss.
Right. And let me just add, I mean, if you, this is in the packet, so if you all want, and the residents go back, I think this is addressing a lot of the concerns that you've brought up to try to get to a right answer, and frankly, that's what we're trying to get to, truthfully. And so the questions that are asked in here, I think, give us the ability to, you know, continue to work through the issues that you have, is in your concerns, and this gives us the, kind of the protocol to do it. And so that's why we want to approve this policy, because this gives us clear direction, it gives the staff clear direction on how we're going to get through these issues and get to hopefully a resolution that's good for everybody. I mean, I don't know how that's going to work, but we're hoping that it gets to a point where it's, like you said, Dr., it's a compromise somewhere in between. So, so anyway, that's what this policy is. I think it's a written, a good, go ahead.
I have one question.
Yeah.
And I understand number two, modifications of the current traffic barriers of the village board. But that, we're talking about modifications that were discussed by the Traffic and Safety Commission. It's not new modifications that people want to bring to us that weren't discussed with the Traffic and Safety Commission, correct?
Correct.
So I just think we ought to make that clear. All modifications that were discussed.
That's a great catch, because we want to make sure that.
Sure.
Because it really is said in number one, but you're right, it doesn't.
And then just on Section B, it was separated just because it's more of a, it's not specific to the northeast traffic study, was the discussion that, about public notice for similar implementations. It was mentioned earlier that the Traffic Safety Commission's practice has been notification of a block, and that is based in that most of the changes that we've made are based on stop signs or parking, so those were appropriate measures for that. And in this case, in feedback from the village board and residents, this is kind of a statement to expand that radius of notification to a thousand feet from the location for blocking a street. A thousand feet is higher than most other code radius, radii. It's usually 500 feet, but that rarely gets much past a block in town, so a thousand feet was deemed to be, to kind of capture the neighborhood for similar actions like this. So this will be in place for when, if there are any similar modifications recommended from the village-wide traffic study or the Traffic Safety Commission after that fact.
So what would the notice, would be notice provided to residents that it's under consideration versus a presentation of the way it went here? Is that what I'm saying? The notice should come to us that it's under consideration.
Correct.
So we could attend a meeting and voice our.
Right, I think.
In this, it mentions that this would be before the village board would adopt that change.
So it's the same, right, Lisa, same thing. Right, okay.
It'll be similar to a zoning notice.
Yeah, so let us finish, if you want to come to the podium, because people who want to hear this can't hear the questions, so if you, I mean, I'm happy to take your questions.
Including trustee Johnson can't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did see you.
You can't hear you when you're speaking from the audience.
Oh, I thought he had a question. So if you want to, I'd be allowed to take the podium? No, okay.
One response, there was a question about informing business owners, so yes, the intent here, and it's mentions that it would be residential or commercial tenants.
So, so, so everybody, so the other part that you have there is if a business doesn't own the building, it's going to go to the landlord and not, and it's going to be incumbent, well, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, no, a good point, but that's.
It's going to be incumbent upon the tenant, the landlord, to make sure that the tenant understands. It's just in those cases where we have that situation.
Which is how zoning notices are.
Can I ask a question? In terms of the thousand, the mailing, there's no time or estimated time when it's mailed? Is it mailed a month before the meeting? Is it mailed, I guess, because that's the other thing I've heard people, is like, if you mail it a week before, I may not be around.
Right.
So.
Was it normally?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. What is it?
Some of these are tricky. I'll offer, you know, the, sorry, the stop signs, the parking restrictions, those are easy because those are up for discussion, those are planned discussions. When you get into a study like this, it gets a little tricky because part of the study may not make a particular recommendation, and through the course of discussion, the commission might, that might be something that just naturally comes out of the conversation. Well, that just happens live during the conversation, so if that's a recommendation that was made, staff would then be in a position to have to notify the impacted people ahead of a board meeting potentially, unless those are remanded back to Traffic and Safety for a more fleshed-out conversation.
So, yeah, so what Jeff's, what Jeff's talking about comes up in zoning all the time, and it's where you give, the notice that you give, although zoning is more jurisdictional, it's more, it's a more strict, because it's statutorily prescribed, but it deals with, when you give a zoning notice, you want it to be broad enough, because as Jeff pointed out, sometimes there's a give and take in the zoning process, whether it's a variation or whether it's a development of some kind, and the ultimate development that goes in may be significantly different from the original proposal. So you want the notice to be broad enough so a member of the public can expect that this could have included what this looks like today. And that's a judgment call when it comes to the, none of this notice stuff is legally required. This is legislation, the board doesn't need to send it to the commission, doesn't need to do anything. This is all being done in an effort to provide more openness and notice, so none of it's required. It'll be a judgment call as to whether, should we send this back to traffic to get more input, or is this a fair way to deal with it right now? It'll be a give and take.
Does it make sense to include a point that either, maybe it's more for the Traffic and Safety Commission, that they consider what the timing should be and have that be a recommendation by them or with village staff input?
Right. Either, or.
So that you can.
So one thing I was going to add, just for comparison purposes, the zoning period is typically 15 days. Again, not required, I'm just saying that's what's typically considered appropriately, and you don't want it to be more than either, because then it's easily forgotten.
Just to put it in a little context too, we've got the village-wide study coming up, and so there will be a report completed at one point that will go to the commission for discussion. And so there may or may not be specific recommendations within that report that would warrant sending notifications out, right? Maybe cul-de-sacs on Madison or something like that, or Thatcher, or whatever. But through the course of that initial conversation, those recommendations might drastically change. So at what point would, you know?
Well, I would think what Lisa just said, it's whatever is being considered for a vote, to me, should have a notice to the residents.
And we should just have it, at some, either at our table or the Traffic and Safety
Commission table, have a discussion of what that looks like.
Yeah, but it should be something that's being considered as a, as a vote.
And then for new recommendations that come up just organically in the course of conversation, would you all like to see that remanded back with a proper notification period back to Traffic and Safety before it came to you all?
If it's significant, if it's a significant, significant change, I think so.
And then I would also add, I know it's not here, but just putting it on our website or something, you know, or our newsletter, if to the extent we can.
We do, yeah. We do, as many e-news as monthly newsletters, we did a project page on our website for this, we certainly, certainly try.
No, 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 we would do all of that, just by, but this is another just focus.
I'm not a, yes, I agree, I agree.
Something else that I think might be good for consideration under Section B is when we gave the information about this being changed, one of the things that we didn't do was offer what we consider were the alternative routes for people. I think maybe for businesses especially, if we had provided that information to them, they may have been able to give that to their clients upfront, instead of them trying to figure out what would be the best, and they could at least take that into consideration.
Sure, I think we could incorporate that. Do you mean for the notice before consideration?
I think they should be done in general. Anytime there's a change of.
I agree.
Infrastructure.
Specifically, if there's definitely a change in traffic.
Okay. I'd like to just clarify my understanding of the point number two in the policy statement, that, just for clarity, any action to make the current temporary traffic installations in this northeast section of town permanent would require village board action by vote. Is that what, that's one of the things that that's, number two says?
I think it says any modifications that, and as res recommended, any modifications recommended by the commission to the current traffic barriers and controls require the board vote.
Right, so any, any.
Trustee Brennan, I think if this E, the question is asking the Traffic Safety Commission if they're, if they do recommend the permanent installation, and to trustee Vasquez's point, that would be a recommendation from the commission back to the village board, and it would be approved as such, in addition to likely amounts that would exceed village staff spending authority.
Okay, so to make them permanent, it would have to come back to our village board, and we would have to be voting on that specifically. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so with the, with the change that trustee Vasquez asked for, and I think he's right about the modifications coming from the commission, and number two, and, I mean, we can add something about informing the businesses, but I think that should be a rule regardless.
I think trustee Bachner seeking some type of.
Definition of alternate routes.
Alternate routes are kind of.
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe that should be a nap, you know, or somewhere up here on the modifications. Given the modifications, what alternate route?
Yep, we could.
Yeah, and I mean in general, too.
Well, if it's general, then this is just specific to northeast, what?
This is specific.
Yeah, so we could add, add any changes.
General direction.
The general direction. So in addition to the commission, any modifications of the commission, and then any general, and general direction.
Direction.
Okay, that's good, those are good changes.
Question?
Yeah, one question.
I would just like to say that I don't think the issue is that we didn't know how to explain to people an alternate route. It's that, that we didn't, that we don't want them to have to take all these alternate routes. That is the problem that is affecting our business, not our ability to tell them, you have to go to Division and then to William to then come around. We know how to do that. It's more just.
That was comments that happened in the past where somebody said that, I think it may have been Dr. Novak, I don't recall, but yeah, people, people have said they didn't know how to navigate the area.
I think that it's, you know, it's not just the people that are already part of your customer base or patient base, it's other, new people that are trying to navigate. I mean, you can't just, so then we have to send out what, a postcard ourselves as our marketing and be like, and this is the convoluted way you have to get to our space, you know?
The only way to do that, I mean, Google won't do it anymore unless, you know, because you have to get it changed.
Right.
Takes a lot of changes.
Yes.
So I think what trustee Bachner's saying is, you know, if this is helpful to you, I mean, like you said, it may not be helpful to you.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be a lot of extra work that isn't really necess, that's all I'm saying, because I don't think that's really where the problem is.
We understand.
Of course. Yeah, we hope it's on last time. What you hear.
The question is, if the traffic committee recommends to make the barriers permanent.
Yes.
Then you, nice ladies and gentlemen, then you have to vote.
We'll discuss it.
And you vote that they are permanent, and then do we have still any input? Can we oppose? That's my question.
Yes, yes, of course, always. You always have a vote, you always have a voice.
Then why, why are, to make this chronic problem, that you speed up and solve it, and that's it?
Well, because there's others that, you know, we're trying to solve.
I know there are people that they are for, but where are they? They are not here.
Well, I mean, I'm not speaking under behalf. I, I don't know.
Simple question, right? If they are so much interested, they should come, and I said, we want the barriers because they are nice colors, because these are.
I don't know. I mean, I can't answer.
Okay, thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
Kathy, I have one.
Yeah, Lisa. And then more, we're supposed to be deliberating here, but Lisa, go ahead. I'm sorry, but there's one thing here that's, it's the elephant in the room. I think there needs to be some statement that when the traffic, the Traffic and Safety Commission, as you say, you rely on them because that's their expertise and they make recommendations to you. If they make a recommendation to you that is contrary, in direct contravention of a traffic and safety study, I think they need to advise you that their recommendation is actually not compliant with what was recommended and why.
Yeah.
And if it doesn't do that, you're going to be back here again. Right. Right. Yep, and they should, and one of the things that, you know, I'm sure Jeff knows in terms of dealing with the commission, is that when a report comes back, it needs to have justification on the report, if it's different. Interesting enough, I mean, sometimes it is different, and residents like it, I mean, depending on this, on the situation, so, but understood, heard you, and we, we hear you. So we're gonna, we're just going to ask, I mean, unless it's something different?
No, it's, yeah, it is different, it's very, very quick. So I have been asked forever with FOIA, with letters, can I see the study that is supporting the barriers? I've asked everyone, and no one has an answer. Is such study, does it exist or not? I would like to see the reasons why, written by someone who knows what is doing, some expert, somebody with qualification. And then if it is someone with qualification that says, yes, the barriers are necessary, then I will not come here every two weeks to say the same thing. So please, is there such study? Does it exist? Yes or no? The one that supports the barriers?
Again, we appreciate the comment, I mean, I think that's a question that the commission needs to answer as well, but I'll just say that, you know, they gave us their views and viewpoint on this.
No, they should be available, it should be available, this is the village.
Well, what is, whatever.
Only study that was completed was the KLA study.
The KLA, so that's the only study that exists, the KLA. So why people came up all of a sudden with barriers if there is no data supporting the barriers? This isn't the question that I really, I've been trying to have an answer for over two months, and I would, I wrote a letter to each one of you, excuse me a second, to each one of you, and I apologize if I'm being rude, at least twice, I had FOIA letters, could please anyone send me a very quick email saying, yes, the study supporting the barriers exists or no? Somebody did it without any study, and there are no data supporting it. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so any further questions on the policy statement that we need to vote on? So hearing no further comments or questions, then I'd ask for the vote, please.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Gillis.
Yes.
Trustee Bachner.
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. All right, so we'll go through to a new business. If I can get a motion in a second on item nine A.
Motion to, what are we doing here? Approve the leasing from ZO1 Medical Corporation in an annual amount of $19,939.29.
Second. Okay, very good, thank you. Any comments or questions on, on this issue? Pretty straightforward. Okay, hearing none, I'd like to ask the deputy clerk to take the vote.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Gillis.
Yes.
Trustee Bachner.
Yes.
And Trustee O'Connell.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so let's go to nine B. This is an introduction to permit fee analysis and revisions, and again, no action, just begin our discussion.
Correct. All right, so in the village's continued effort to streamline the permit review process. staff incorporated a line item in this year's budget to have a review and analysis completed on the village's permit fees. The idea behind the effort is to further find efficiencies in the process that will allow the village to be more transparent with fee-related if, uh, information, excuse me, and to make the fee identification process easier for both staff as well as applicants. Uh, we're also trying to make sure that our fees are aligned with general industry standards, so that we don't have any major outliers one way or the other. Without having previously performed a comprehensive review of the village's permit fees, it seems ideal to complete this work now that the implementation of LAMA, our permit portal software, has been somewhat completed, um, we've currently, or recently, I should say, worked through some, uh, with new staff, we've gone back and done another round of training, so, uh, we're, we're heavily reliant and, uh, more so on a daily basis on LAMA, and because of its automation capabilities, simplifying our permit fee process, um, can make a big difference in streamlining the, the overall review process. So to that end, in November of last year, the village entered into a contract with HR Green to perform the work, and though the final report is not yet available for review, staff felt it was prudent to, uh, kind of introduce the general project to the board as you've not seen it before, um, and just kind of walk you all through some of the information that has already been made available to us on a preliminary basis, just to solicit feedback and see if there are any questions at this time before we continue on with the work. Uh, some of these, uh, highlights that we have been able to suss out thus far, uh, include, some of the fee analysis shows that our permit fees, which, you know, are, are building permit fees, uh, which is the, the more significant fees, we, we charge two percent or two-point three-five percent if it's commercial on the cost of construction, uh, those more significant fees, which is going to make up the bulk of our revenue related to permit fees, uh, those are generally aligned with, uh, industry standards, so we would not be looking to make any significant changes on those fees. Uh, our construction bonds appear, like, appear to be slightly low, so we'll probably be coming back and trying to increase those a little bit. Uh, solar panel fees, obviously, that technology, as it continues to grow, uh, we think it would make sense to have a standalone fee for that to simplify the process for those looking to install solar per, uh, panels. Our contractor license fees, we have numerous contradictions throughout the, the ordinance and, uh, in LAMA as well, so general cleanup is just another one thing that we need to do, we don't believe that this comprehensive review has ever been performed on our permit fees, so, um, there will be a lot of cleanup coming out of this as well. Our water-related fees here appear to be slightly low, so we might want to increase some of those, and, uh, once we get to the point where we're making recommendations back to you all for raising or lowering some of our permit fees, um, we'll have some additional review to see if we can generally simplify the process. Some of our fees, as aligned with industry standards as they may be, uh, can be quite convoluted, for instance, electrical work, you get charged for every outlet you're installing, so imagine eight hundred Harlem, the assisted living facility, that probably took hours just to calculate, you know, several hundred dollars worth of electrical fees, so there are ways in which we can make the process more efficient and simplified, again, both for staff as well as for applicants. I've included a, a table of the village's current fees here in the memo, so you can kind of have some context for this conversation. Ultimately, we're going to complete the assessment and identify areas where the fee structure can be simplified, and we're going to try to create a framework. What you see this table here, doesn't really exist in the ordinance anywhere, that's us just, you know, staff putting that list together into a digestible format. What we would like to do is truly create a table like that, that we can put in our ordinance, so that all permit fees live in one place, and everywhere else throughout the ordinance that is referencing a fee can just reference back to one table, so that way any future changes that we do want to make, we know they're all in one spot, we don't have to be back in this position again, uh, down the line as far as the cleanup goes. Uh, so at this time, there's no motion required, um, we just, again, wanted to introduce this project to the village board and, uh, solicit any feedback that you all have, or with that, happy to answer any questions you have as well.
I, I would just say that on the solar, um, panel fee, I know that, um, our soul smart designation and designations that we're continuing to go for require cost-effective approval process, and we want to, um, encourage our residents and incentivize them to go for solar, so it has to be, you know, cost-effective.
True.
Thanks.
Uh, one other thing that, uh, uh, we are exploring is kind of additional, um, nuisance or site condition, um, uh, fees or fines, I guess would be more, more accurate.
Yeah, so one of the, one of the issues that interim manager Walsh raised was, uh, you, fees have to be charged, and they have to have some basis to the kind of staff time or the, sort of the impact on the village, but there are situations where you have permits that remain open with work uncompleted, and the idea is, well, then the, the permit fees have to be renewed, and so the thought was, well, if someone's leaving a project unfinished for that long, uh, when they renew, why don't we quadruple or, or really make those fees very expensive? The problem with that is there really may not be very much staff time, the problem isn't so much the impact on the staff, it's the impact on the residents of the village. So, one of the things we're looking at is, you know, you, when you take out a permit, there's a, there's a time period to complete it, and that's because it's anticipated the work will be done within that time period. So one thing we're looking at are situations where there, there are unfinished projects, and you'd still have to renew your permit or get an extension or do a whole new process anyway, but in addition to that, if the status of the property, uh, is what we would define as a nuisance to the community, it would be more appropriate than to make that a violation of the code and seek fines for that, rather than simply trying to use the fee renewal process as a punishment. Does that make sense? It would still have to be done.
Yep.
Uh, but these would, these would be more fines, and fines do not have to be related to staff.
I highly encourage, yeah, totally makes sense, and I'd like that to be part of, you know, this, you know, whatever we're gonna approve.
That's, that, that's the direction, I, I don't have a finished product, yet it isn't part of Jeff's mission, it's more mine, but it's to be included with.
So on, so on a, so let's just keep it at some kind of residential remodeling project, if you will. Is, what kind of timeframe are, I mean, generally speaking, are we talking about a year from being?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, and a residential remodeling project probably wouldn't rise to the level of becoming a nuisance, it would be more, yeah, that would be more just extensions, you know, so.
But, but does that fall, excuse me, does that fall to a renewal of the permit or a fine?
Well, really more of a renewal of the permit on a small project like that, because it probably wouldn't have much effect on the surrounding properties, but if it did, if it did, right, that's an if, what, what I'm envisioning is a, an ordinance that would more likely apply to more large commercial projects that remain, uh, unfinished. We saw back in oh-eight, when the housing market collapsed, there were a number of single-family houses that were part of the boom that simply stopped, and they remained there in a half-finished condition. Those, those situations at that time were typically resolved by demolition actions, which allow you to, allow municipality to recoup all its costs for tearing down and restoring a property like that, but this kind of ordinance could be used for something like that as well.
Are we going to be taking a look at all our fines then, in relation to this process?
Not specific to this process, um, I know that we, staff has discussed, uh, revisiting other fines and fees as well, this was more specific to construction and building, um, development related, um, but we certainly can explore those as well.
Makes sense.
Yeah, trying to confine it, right. Okay, all right, sounds good, so we'll look forward to seeing more later on. All right, good. All right, thank you. All right, well, um, I think that concludes, uh, so, um, our open regular business, um, we are gonna go into executive session, so.
Do we have to close it out and then open it?
I think we go into executive session.
Right, so we move to enter into executive session pursuant to five, ILCS one-twenty backslash two, sub-paragraph C, sub-paragraph one, to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the village, and the village board will adjourn after executive session and will not return to open session. Second.
Okay.
Trustee Johnson.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Gillis.
Yes.
Trustee Bachner.
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell.
Yes.
All right, we'll take just a two-minute, and then we'll read, so, can you stay? Okay. And Matt will leave.
Good luck, guys.
That's up to you.
Okay, no worries, I'll handle this. No worries, no worries, I got it.
I'm really glad you called in. And then you could just text me when, uh.